Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. As always, we thank the great team over at East Hampton Media for their assistance in broadcasting this meeting. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conference application. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by me to speak. Also, to members of the public, and I mentioned this earlier, but as a few more have come in, please remain, keep your video turned off. If you decide that you want to participate in public speak, you can go ahead and turn it on at that time. Also today, because of some business that we need to conduct today, we're going to limit public speak to 30 minutes. We do have a public hearing at 6:15, so we'll allow public speak until then. Once the public hearing is done, we'll allow another 15 minutes or so of public hearing, and then we're going to close the public, the public speak, sorry. All right. I believe that is all. We will now call the meeting to order. Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
President.
Yep. Erica Flood?
Here.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zaret?
Here.
Thank you. We'll now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic which stands-
One nation-
Under God, indivisible-
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of January 6th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Staying.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom? Oh, Tom's not here. He's still not here. Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
We will now open up public speak. As I indicated, we will be limiting it to 30 minutes. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. If, at the time you're speaking, the timer goes off, I'll let you finish the sentence you're on, but then we need to move on. Remember that you are directing your, your comments directly to the city council and that you, we ask that you remain respectful. If you would like to speak, I think we're kind of all used to how to, used to how we do this now, select the participant options at the bottom of your screen, and then click raise hand at the bottom of the participant window. Before you comment, please give us your name and your street or your town, especially, obviously, if you're not in East Hampton. If you would prefer to give the district or the precinct that you reside in, that's okay, too. You will have three minutes. I have a timer up here, and we, as I mentioned, we have a public hearing at 6:15, so at 6:15, we'll have to take an intermission on public speak. So, those of you who have raised your hands, for some reason, it's not showing up on my participant window. Dan, do you see them on your participant window?
I do. I do. Kay Collins? Go ahead, Kay.
Good evening, councilors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Kay Collins. I live at Fort Carolav, East Hampton. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of AKind 01027, and he is not enough. You will hear specific questions and statements from a number of group members this evening in reference to issues in the community that we have been working on since our founding, shortly after the death of George Floyd early last year. In addition to asking for concrete change rather than symbolic demonstrations of anti-racism, we have grown into an organization that is stepping forward to take action that directly benefits residents of the city of East Hampton. On this historic day where we watched the first black South Asian woman sworn into the second highest office of the land, we would like to strongly remind you that the work of dismantling systemic racism does not end with a historic first and a new administration. We recognize the steps that you are taking tonight, but we urge you to dig deeper and learn more and work harder, to listen to your community, to truly create a welcoming and equitable city, and one that looks below the surface to find the gaps in support for people in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
Do you have them yet, Peg?
I don't.
Jen Markie is next.
Hi there. My name is-
We can barely hear you, Jen. Can you turn up your mic volume? You can do that.
How does this sound?
That's better.
All right, great. My name is Jen Markie. I am a resident at 45 Ridgewood Terrace in East Hampton, and I am going to read, I was going to read the second half of a statement, but I'll read the first half now. Since the murder of George Floyd and the beginning of the COVID pandemic, AKind has worked tirelessly for transparency and accountability in our local governing body. Before I read this statement, I want to say I hope that all of us white folks are continuing to do anti-racism work. There's a lot of unlearning and relearning to do. Here are a few urgent and concerning issues that have been identified about how the school district has been handling remote learning. Specifically, I would like to address the issues around access to information, internet, and school lunches. We have learned that there are significant barriers preventing families from learning how the district is handling remote learning, especially families where the primary caregiver is not a native English speaker or doesn't have reliable access to the internet. At the last school committee meeting, we learned that there are at least 1,033 absences that have been waived. It's clear that there are so many kids and families that are falling through the cracks. According to the U.S. Department of Justice and Department of Education, it's up to the school districts to determine which families have limited English proficiency, and then, quote, "must provide effective language assistance to limited English proficient parents," such as by offering translated materials or a language interpreter. In communication with parents, email updates are exclusively written in English right now, putting the burden on families to speak up and ask for translation. Allison stated in her email update to families, which was dated the 15th of January 2021, "If you would like to get support for any of these issues and you are not a native English speaker, please contact our diversity and engagement coordinator, Cindy Mohica. She is happy to help with conversations in your native language." How does the superintendent satisfy the law that EPS communications, including family updates, must be communicated to limited English proficient parents in a language they can understand? The school employs an interpretation service, but very few families know about it, and it's clearly not being used for regular communication. And I'm gonna stop there and say thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. I have Tim Wallace and Vicky Elson next.
Thank you. My name is Timon Wallace. I am living in Northampton, but I'm representing the Nuclear and Carbon Free Future Coalition of Western Mass, which includes people in East Hampton. And I, first of all, wanted to thank the city council for the, your initiative about this time last year. I think it was introduced by Councilor Rist to pass a resolution calling on the federal government to take a stand on the nuclear weapons issue. And we're very grateful for East Hampton for doing that, and our group has been holding the Hiroshima Day events every year on, on August 6th or 9th at the, at the ponds in East Hampton, and we're very grateful for support that we get from the people of East Hampton. And I'm here to thank and show my support and our, our group's support for the mayor's executive policy order about taking this step, another step forward for East Hampton. It's a very exciting moment. We're waiting for New York City to pass a resolution divesting New York City pension funds from the nuclear weapons companies. This was all set to happen right before COVID started, and now it's been delayed, but I think that's going to hit the news very soon. And as many of you may know, the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, which we've been campaigning for the last several years, enters into force in two days from now, after having the 50 countries ratify this treaty. And so there are things happening all around the world, and around the country, and around the states, and we're very grateful for East Hampton to be, to be part of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Timon.
Thank you. Eric Pullan is next.
Hi, everyone. Eric Pullan, Precinct 2. Happy inauguration day to you all. I guess the transfer of leadership on a national level has me thinking about leadership on a more local level this evening, and some great examples of leadership that have occurred in our community, as well as some further opportunities for leadership amongst our leaders. So I'm here to echo and give my thanks to the members of AKind who have gone out into the community and provided leadership and recognized needs amongst people in our community, particularly lower-income people who may not have access to technology, who may not be able to access meals for, for schoolchildren. AKind really stepped up and filled that need, and I look forward to, hopefully, school administration filling that gap, and the city council also picking up the torch of that leadership. I'd also like to thank Councilor Rothschild for her leadership with the letter to the editor that she sent to the Gazette last week. I can't speak for Councilor Rothschild with what her intent was, but I can say that I did actually sign a petition that hundreds of other East Hampton residents also signed, asking, recognizing that in the insurrection two weeks ago, a large proportion of law enforcement officers from various communities around the country participated in it. Now, while none of us, I believe, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm certainly not accusing, would never accuse members of our police department of supporting white supremacy or being present and participating in the insurrection, I think it's pretty low-hanging fruit for, and, and a real leadership opportunity that Mayor Alberdi is missing out on, to make a statement to say, "We don't support white supremacy. None of our officers were there, and we will work with our community to make it a safer and more inclusive place." I think it's a simple statement that would go a really long way in making a lot of people feel more safe and more comfortable in their community. The flip side is, and the concern, and I'm not saying that this is a possibility, but if there's no statement that comes from our police department denouncing white supremacy and ensuring us that no members of the department were there, why is that? I'm not saying that they were there, but it just, it does leave a question of why this, this statement hasn't come out. I could assure you that, I mean, in my profession, my professional associations all spoke out about what happened on January 6th, and there was no, to my knowledge, there's been no widespread evidence of librarians or college professors taking large part in the demonstrations. I think Chief Alberdi could go a long way in helping members of our community feel safer. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Eric.
I have Jean Francis next. We have two minutes left, Madam President.
Okay, Jean.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I was going to read the first part of what Jen read, but I'm going to read the second part now. And also, I'm going to sort of reiterate some of what Eric just said about the school lunches, and I'm going to read this. I might repeat, but I'm going to try. Okay, so part of our recent communication with AKind, oh, Jean Francis, I live in Precinct 2. Recent communications focused on the new rules around lunch pickups. After talking with community members, it came out to our attention that folks that typically relied on the school meals for their children are not able to access it largely due to issues of transportation. Currently, AKind is picking up the slack, but this is not sustainable or appropriate for a long-term solution. This responsibility lies with the school, and should that be better addressed, that should have been better addressed months ago, and should be addressed now. The city has a moral and legal obligation to ensure that all students in our district have access to meals. Okay. Additionally, we have been made aware that several students have been struggling with school due to lack of reliable internet, where the school claims that they provide internet to all that are, that ask. The hotspots that they are offering are not reliable, and often students must miss classes due to inability to log on to the, into the Zoom. We urge the city council to investigate alternative internet connections for these students. We know that through email communications with AKind, the superintendent, the city council, the school committee, and the mayor, Nicole, have known about this emergency for, of these issues since at least December 20th. It is now a month later, and we have yet to see meaningful official action around these issues. As more data continues to show the growing educational gaps in East Hampton for economically disadvantaged kids, students with disabilities, and students of color, I urge the city council, the school committee, and the school district to develop thoughtful, targeted strategies and solutions to remove the barriers that continue to prevent students in East Hampton from accessing their education and their meals. Additionally, since these educational gaps are part of a large systemic issue within the school system, these strategies should extend beyond remote learning and focus on assuming that these students always have the, that all students always have the tools to successfully, to succeed despite changes in our learning environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jean. I will now, we're going to pause public speak until the public hearing is over. I will take a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, open the public hearings. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
JP?
Aye.
Okay. Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye. Public hearing is now open. The first item on the agenda is utility poll location request. Counselor Zaret.
Madam President, if I might, can the, our citizens, public speak, lower your hands so we know if you're wanting to ask a question about the public hearing at this time. When we open public speak again, you can raise your hands again, of course.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Okay. Counselor Zaret.
Thank you, President Coniff. The, this, this item specifically is a request from Eversource to install two jointly-owned poles along Main Street, either side of the road, to supply electrical service to KC Tactical. The location of these poles is approximately 118 feet westerly of True Heart Drive. The property committee met on December 16th to discuss this, and I'd say generally, we voted 3-0 to approve, but we had questions for Eversource, and I see that Nick, and you'll forgive me, sir, if it's Langone or Langoney, I saw that he is here today. The only real question we had is whether there are provisions, and I believe this was answered in an email, whether there are provisions in place to allow for future expansion from the municipality. Specifically, we're thinking about municipal broadband. There is language in here for fire and police telephone signal, but we just wanted to make sure that the poles are installed with expansion capabilities for municipality, or is that something we would have to request? And-
Nick, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go. I can't hear you, Nick.
Hello?
Now we can hear you.
All right. City of East Hampton. So I couldn't make the, the last time meeting for this, but, so as Mrs. Zaret just said, you know, these poles on Main Street looking to re-feed that building. Currently, that building is fed through an environmentally sensitive area behind the building, so we're looking to bring that to the street to make it more accessible. And to answer your question, yes, the town will have the ability to, municipal fiber. We always try to accommodate these projects with the town and work with them when that project does come to fruition. It's a pretty easy process, and it's pretty affordable, so when that-
You lost him.
Yeah.
Madam President? Just, Madam President?
Yes.
Disappointing information, since the communication was broken up, would you please ask him to repeat himself?
Yes.
For the record. I think critical pieces were missing.
Nick?
All right. Where, where did you lose me? I'm sorry.
I think after you started talking about you always make available municipal fiber and cable on the poles, then we lost you.
Right. So these are going to be 45-foot poles, so there's going to be plenty of room for you to attach with your fiber optics. And Eversource, as a company, always works with the municipalities.
Okay. I presume that was, if you, I think you ended, Nick, because we can't, we, you kind of cut out, but the last thing we heard was you work with municipalities. So if that was the end, then that's cool. Counselor Zaret, do you have any other questions for Nick?
First of all, President Coniff, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. My screen froze. No, I don't. I think that he answered, Nick answered the questions of our committee satisfactorily, but I would defer to the members of the committee if they had further questions.
Any other city councillor have any questions, either of Counselor Zaret or of Mr. Langone? Raise your hand if you do. Not seeing any? Okay. Shall we move to a vote, then?
Members of the public?
Oh, members of the public. You always get me on that, Counselor Rist. Thank you. It's why we make, it's why we make such a good team. Is anyone from the public who would like to speak to the utility poll issue? I'm shocked. Okay. Owen, you want to make a motion? Owen is frozen.
Owen.
Give me one of those kind of nights, I think.
Obviously, we need to improve his internet connection. Owen, is there another member of the committee that can read the motion? May we present this at a later time, since-
Just read it off the application, or even on the, on the agenda.
Okay. Dandy, or, who's on the committee? The property committee? Lindsay or?
No.
Not anymore. You're not on property anymore. JP?
Myself and JP.
JP, why don't you go ahead and read it, and we'll make that a motion?
Would you care to pull it up?
I can go, President Coniff, I can go ahead and read that from the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor.
Start it, I, I, to install. So I make a motion to, to approve permission to install two jointly-owned poles on Main Street, one on each side of the road, beginning approximately 118 feet westerly of True Heart Drive.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the installation of a pole, or two poles on Main Street. Any further discussion? Counselor Kozinski?
Did that language include the reserving the rights for municipal uses, as is typical?
That, that information is on, is on the app, it's on the paperwork from them.
I, I just didn't hear it, and I didn't know if it was read, and I wanted to be sure that we quoted that language and included.
It's, it's up to whoever made the motion and the second. Counselor Rist?
I'm only going to say that the application is sufficient language. I think the motion is to accept the application. So I believe that if the application is accepted in the motion, then we don't have to worry about whether or not we read that into it. I like your, I like your ruling, Counselor Rist. Thank you so much.
All right. We'll take a roll call vote, then. Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret? We still lost Owen. Okay. Peg Coniff?
Aye.
And Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda are a number of supplemental appropriations. I will turn it over to you, Counselor Rist.
Just so you know, Madam President, keep an eye out for Owen. He texted me that he's logging back on. His computer crashed.
Okay. Thank you.
The first supplemental appropriation is a $1 million appropriation from free cash to pre-stabilization accounts, so that the public is aware our stabilization accounts are equivalent to savings accounts. These stable accounts, stabilization accounts roll over every year. They're not subject to free cash judgments by the Department of Revenue. They stay in their particular accounts, and it makes our city look stable, to use the word, to any bonding agency or anybody concerned about our fiscal health. These stabilization accounts will hedge our budget uncertainty in the future. Just so you're aware, after we move money into these stabilization accounts, in general stabilization, there will be $3,425,594. In capital stabilization, there'll be $1,888,825. And the tax rate stabilization account is designed so that we can use it to hedge against tax increases occurring because of the override for the school. So we're putting $100,000 towards those tax increases using this money. If anybody has any questions, the mayor's here, as well as Val, or I'll answer if I can.
Any councilors have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions? I don't see any. Dan, do you?
I don't have any questions.
No, do you have, do you see any hands up?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. I'm sorry. I forgot you don't have that capability.
Everything's going crazy today. Okay. Go ahead.
Welcome back, Counselor Zaret. So I should make a motion, Madam President?
I think that's a great idea.
I move that the full council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is $1 million, from free cash, $1 million, to fund 84 general stabilization, $600,000; fund 85 capital stabilization, $300,000; and fund 88 tax rate stabilization, $100,000. To fund general stabilization to provide ability in the current environment, to fund capital stabilization to meet capital needs, and to fund the tax rate stabilization to help reduce the impact of debt exclusions on the tax rate.
Motion and a second to approve the supplemental appropriation for stabilization. I have a question, Counselor Rist. You had mentioned the total that would be then in general stabilization and capital stabilization. Do you know the full number that will then be in the tax rate stabilization fund after you moved this 100,000?
Only 100,000. We, we took the other 100,000 out when we did the budget.
Okay, thank you.
This year.
Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
I'm abstaining just because I didn't hear the full discussion. Otherwise, I'd support it.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next appropriations are established by the Department of Public Works, and our, our DPW head, Greg Nudelman, is here to answer your questions. The first is a request of $25,000, which the DPW contracts to fix the fire department floor. There is a concrete floor in the apparatus space where there's a 70-foot trench drain system, and the concrete around these grates is spalling. The grate framing is deteriorating, and they're loose. It presents a safety hazard to our fire personnel, and we certainly don't want someone injured because when they're loose, someone could trip and fall into these holes. And of course, the chief is here if you have any questions, but this is an urgent repair, and the, the finance committee did approve this. Greg is here if you have any questions, or the chief.
Does anyone on the council have any questions? Counselor Rothschild?
Just a quick question. I was wondering if this repair needed as a result of ongoing kind of deterioration, or if it was some kind of incident that created the situation?
It's just, it's ongoing deterioration. The fire trucks come back in from being on calls with, you know, road salt or debris on them, and it gets onto the, onto the grates, and that's just caused them to, over time, just rot out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Not seeing any? Councilor Wrist?
I'll therefore make a, a motion that the council, the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $25,000 to be transferred from free cash. $25,000 to be transferred to the fiscal year 21 fire department floor repair. $25,000 repair is needed on the concrete floor in the fire department apparatus space. A 70-foot trench drain system is located along the apparatus bay front doors. The concrete around the drain grates is falling and the grate framing is deteriorating. This allows for drain grates to become dislodged if they are stepped on and presents a safety hazard. Second.
Motion and a second to, for the supplemental appropriation to repair the fire department floor. Any further discussion? Councilor Wrist?
Barbara? Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Wrist?
Next appropriation is a DPW request from Enterprise for water meter replacement. We do this every year. The $50,000 is used to replace mostly older meters and to update other meters for radio control. They're about $250 each. We do this every year to maintain the integrity of our meter system so that we don't waste water. Greg is here again if you have questions on this.
Counselors, do you have any questions of Mr. Nudelman? Anyone from the public have any questions on this supplemental appropriation?
I see no hands raised.
Councilor Wrist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $50,000 to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to fiscal year 21 water meter replacement. $50,000 for the following purpose. The Water Division replaces approximately 250 water meters annually. Cost per meter varies based on size and type. A standard residential sized meter with integrated radio reading capability is approximately $200. Second.
Motion is second for a supplemental appropriation for FY21 water meters. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Did we lose Ben?
Okay. Tom? Okay, Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
We got Tom back yet?
I don't see him. Okay. Motion passes.
Next appropriation is a $10,000 appropriation for a DPW odor, odor, control tank. They smell. The wastewater treatment plant currently pays a monthly rental fee of $125 for a tank to store odor control chemicals. We purchased a new tank and we don't rent anymore. It has a much longer life than the payback for this. It's like a six and a half year payback. And the life of the new tank would be 20 years. It's a much more efficient way to control. Again, Greg is here to answer any questions. And the Finance Committee did approve this.
Any questions from the councilors on the money for an odor controlled tank? Which I personally think is critically important, but that's just me. Oh, look at that. Councilor Flood? And then Councilor Wrist?
Yeah, Councilor Wrist, can you just review the cost savings on that one? I just, a rental versus ownership, once again, you said it's a 20-year lifespan on these?
Yeah, I, I did some math. If you take the $125 and try to divide it into $10,000, you need six and a half years to pay it off. And Greg has said it's a 20-year life for the tank. So I, we on the Finance Committee felt that renting is a waste. Um, it doesn't, I don't forget, Greg, it didn't include maintenance in the rental either, right? So if you could expand on my answer, Greg?
Yeah, really, it's just, it's a way for us to store more chemical and, and in the long run, it won't. It, it will result in savings to the city. So that's why we, we felt as though we should put it forward this year to try to get that, to get that purchased.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
I saw Owen's answer.
I had the same question and it was answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Wrist, anyone from the public have anything they would like to ask on this particular supplemental appropriation?
I see no hands raised.
All right, Councilor Wrist?
I move that the full council approve the supplemental appropriation of $10,000 to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings, $10,000. To be transferred to FY21 odor control tank account, $10,000. For the following purpose, the wastewater treatment plant currently pays a monthly rental fee of $125 for a tank to store odor control chemicals. A tank can be purchased and installed for $10,000.
Second. Motion and a second for a supplemental appropriation for an odor control tank. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
He just came back, so I don't know if you want, probably want to abstain, Tom, if you weren't here.
Yeah, I'll abstain. Sorry, guys, internet is a problem.
Yep, it is. Okay, motion passes.
Moving on, I have an appropriation of $93,021.21 from Enterprise retained earnings for the return and waste pump replacement. We have some existing return and waste pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. They're obsolete and replacement parts are no longer available. I think they're 50-year old, if I remember our conversations, Greg.
Yep.
And the new ones have a life of 20 to 30 years. So we really should have replaced this 20 years ago. Anyway, we certainly want the pumps at the wastewater treatment plant to work. If you have any questions, Greg is here.
Anyone from the council? Councilor Zerret?
So I think, first of all, I just overheard Councilor Wrist say that the lifespan of these new pumps is 20 to 30 years. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. That's what Greg said.
And what, what's the current balance in the account that this is coming out of?
Okay, the Enterprise retained earnings account, I was going to mention this. After all of these funds that we're pulling out tonight, there'll be $1,588,649.26. The Enterprise retained earnings account, for the public's understanding, is similar to the stabilization account, only it's in the enterprise account. It rolls over every year and is typically used for capital expenses and repairs in the water sewer departments and the DPW departments.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Not seeing any? Councilor Wrist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $93,021.74 to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings, $93,021.74. To be transferred to the fiscal year 21 return and waste, waste pump replacement account. $93,021.74 for the purpose of repairing the existing return and wastewater pumps at the wastewater treatment plant, which are obsolete and replacement parts no longer available. These pumps are essential to the operation of the wastewater treatment plant and to meeting the city's discharge permit requirements. Second.
Motion is second for the supplemental appropriation for the return and waste pump replacement account. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi. Hi.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next appropriation, again, from the DPW is a $30,000 appropriation from Enterprise retained earnings. It's for the 20-yard roll-off containers, new ones. These are used for grit disposal and dumpsters. We pay a monthly rental fee, again, of $350. It's a seven-year payback. And this will help us by having more of these dumpsters to catch up on cleaning. I'd like Greg to expand on this. My notes are sketchy, Greg, so we'll have the council know further what this is about.
So we get, the grit dumpsters at the wastewater treatment plant, they collect the solids that, that the plant can't process, whether it be, mostly it's rags or flushable wipes that aren't exactly flushable. And as that, when that dumpster's not emptied every month, we pay a $350 rental fee to have Waste Management's dumpster at our facility. And purchasing our own dumpsters will eliminate that fee and also allow us to have a second dumpster on hand for disposal of catch basin cleanings. We need to do more catch basin cleaning to meet the requirements of our MS4 stormwater permit. And having our own dumpster up here for that will allow it to fill over time and be able to decant because we cannot dispose of the catch basin cleanings while they're wet. So it, it just sets us up to be able to work, work more towards complying with some of our permits and saving money on, on the rental fees, having our own two dumpsters.
Finance Committee approved this 2 to 0.
Anyone from the council have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions?
I see no hands raised, ma'am.
Councilor Wrist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $30,000 to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings. $30,000 to be transferred to the FY21 20-yard roll-off container account. $30,000 for the following purpose. The wastewater treatment plant rents a dumpster for grit disposal and pays a monthly rental fee of $350. Purchasing dumpsters will eliminate this fee. The additional dumpster will also be used for disposal of catch basin and sewer cleaning debris that cannot be discharged into the treatment plant. Second.
Motion is second for supplemental appropriation for 20-yard roll-off containers. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Wrist?
Last supplemental appropriation. Yes, the last one we have is a $20,000 appropriation from Enterprise retained earnings to replace the door replacements at the Daily Field and Headworks at the wastewater, Daily Field Pump Station and the wastewater treatment plant Headworks building. They are exposed to corrosive conditions of sewage, et cetera, and they need to be replaced. They're damaged. Greg, you want to expound on it?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're original doors from the construction of the buildings in the 1970s and
1970, right?
Yeah, so the, they're basically just, they're steel doors and steel frames. And the raw sewage, the presence of the raw sewage in the building leads to a fairly, very corrosive environment. So they've, over the years, between that and the salt that the staff will drag in on their feet when, you know, in the wintertime, it's just led to the frames of the doors just completely rotting out to the point that we're having a lot of difficulty even getting them to stay shut. So just need to get these, both, the entry and exit doors on both buildings replaced.
Okay. Any questions from the councilors? Any questions, Councilor Zerret?
Actually, and I thought about this with the fire department too, but so are, are there technologies or materials that we have available now that we didn't have available when these doors were initially installed that are more resistant to the corrosive properties of the liquids that the interface with?
Well, really, the best thing we can do on the doors, at least on the Headworks and, and Daily Field buildings is just get, is make sure we, we paint them every couple of years. So we'll just try to make sure we, we do a better job of keeping them painted and, and, you know, keep it from getting to the point that it's gotten to. So as far as the trench drain, the drain system at the fire department, unfortunately, we, I, I did, we looked into some other, you know, newer materials to build the drain system out of. However, the weight of the fire trucks, most of the composite or poly materials that would, that we could use for the drain grates and structure will not take the weight of the fire engines. So we, we basically need to reinstall what's there and just try to do a better job of keeping it rinsed out in, in the winter months, keeping the salt off the, off the steel, basically.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Anyone from the public?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, go ahead.
I may move that a supplemental appropriation be approved by the full council. The amount requested is $20,000 to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings, $20,000. To be transferred to fiscal year 21 door replacements at Daily Field and the Headworks. The exterior doors of Daily Field Pump Station and Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks building are rotting away due to their age and corrosive conditions. Second.
Motion is second for a supplemental appropriation to replace the doors at Daily Field and the pump station and the wastewater treatment plant Headworks. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild? Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
One last comment, Madam President. I mentioned the other balances in the other accounts. At the end of the night, in free cash, we have $126,15 left. So we've moved most of the free cash we had into various projects and accounts. And I'll move that the public hearings be closed. Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearings. Any discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye. Public hearings are now closed. We will now reopen public speak. Those of you who would like to continue and have a comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. And Councilor Wrist will let me know who is next.
Myra is up first.
Okay, go ahead, Myra.
Can't hear you, Myra.
You have, hello, you, apparently you've stopped my video.
Yes, we always turn off the video. Let me turn it back on for you. Oh, I apparently can't. I apparently have lost all of my capabilities here.
I'll try to do it.
Okay.
I think you have to do it, Myra, at your end because all I can do is ask you. All right, there you go.
There you go.
Okay, perfect. Well, anyway, good evening, councilors. I think you had a fine example in, in internet issues throughout your meeting. So perhaps you have a bit of an example of what some students are going through. I've prepared a little bit of a talk and it only takes me 2 minutes and 18 seconds. So I won't take too much of your time. So I'd like to say, in relation to East Hampton Public Schools, I would like to thank the City Council for fulfilling its role and scope to engage in oversight, seeking answers to critical questions directly from administration, specifically Superintendent Allison LePierre. These steps help to build trust in knowing that there is a degree of transparency and balance of accountability as there, as there are many questions and concerns shared by parents and residents like myself. As a community, we know that this pandemic has brought about unprecedented dilemmas that require proactive, proactive nimbleness to identify and resolve both anticipated and unforeseen challenges on an ongoing basis. It is important to acknowledge the complexities of education during the pandemic and commend the flexibility and the creativity that has been likened to designing and assembling an airplane while silently traveling aboard. While we can celebrate that feat of engineering, design, and ingenuity, it is also critical that we, residents, administrators, and councilpersons examine and accept that in some cases, despite the craftsmanship, that there are safety belts missing. And many vulnerable students have been injured, as evidenced by the failure rates among students classified as economically disadvantaged and students of color in East Hampton. I would like to take the time to specifically thank our elected officials, City Counselor Omar Gomez, Counselor Lindsay Rothschild, and School Committee Member Shannon Dunham for their commitment to outreach, displaying genuine concern for residents and students in the community. I would like to specifically thank them for taking time, going house to house, to hear experiences and challenges expressed by constituents in regards to education. And I do hope that this council will continue to display sustained interest and continued levels of oversight within its scope to ensure that there is necessary funding, provision of nutrition, adequate staff, student support, and technological capacity, as well as infrastructure and access. Thank you.
Thank you, Myra. Counsel Wrist, before we continue, can you please verify that I am set as a co-host? Sorry.
It says you're the host.
Okay. All right. Having technical difficulties, I have not, I'm losing all of my capabilities here. So I apologize in advance. So we'll continue on. Go ahead.
Liz Perry is next. Liz, we can hardly hear you.
I haven't begun speaking yet, Counselor. Can you hear me now?
Apologize.
That's okay. Hello, my name is Liz Perry. I live in Ward Three. Tonight, I wanted to use public speak to praise Counselor Rothschild on her op-ed that was printed in the Daily Hampshire Gazette on January 13th, entitled Counselor Wants to Hear From Local Law Enforcement. Within that op-ed, Counselor Rothschild calls to the law enforcement leadership to speak out against the insurrection that takes place at the Capitol Building on January 6th. She also affirmed her support for Black Lives Matter movement. During this formidable time, it is reassuring to witness an elected official speak out against the events that took place on the 6th and in support of, as she worded it, "the dismantling of injustice." In Counselor's, in the Counselor's article, she wrote, "The silence is deafening. I've heard nothing from local law enforcement leadership as regards to the seditious acts on January 6th. I did a quick Google search to see if I could find a strong condemnation statement from a police chief somewhere else in the country. I did not. What I did find was the revelation that officers from across the country participated in the storming of the Capitol. Police unions reaffirmed their support for President Trump. On January 10th, Akin sent a list of demands by email to the counselors, the mayor, and Chief Alberti to publicly acknowledge the association that EPD had with the Western Mass Group Correctional Officers for Trump 2020 that chartered a bus to Washington, D.C. on January 6th to guarantee that no member of the EPD participated in the insurrection and to promise an investigation if any evidence of participation surfaced. We did not receive a reply. We did not receive or apply from Counselors Zaret or Coniff to inform us that they were co-authoring a resolution to condemn the insurrection that took place on January 6th. We did not receive a reply from Chief Alberti expressing any condemnation of the events that transpired, even though it is stated in Zaret's and Coniff's notice of resolution that they have his support. Ten days without an acknowledgement from our elected officials is unacceptable. How do you plan to fight racism if you ignore the voices of our black and brown community leaders? After reading Counselors Zaret and Coniff's resolution, I feel a little disappointed. It does condemn the use of racist symbols, but does not specify what symbols are being referred to. Will it include the thin blue line flag? Will Counselors Zaret publicly admit that his gift of such flags to the police and fire department was a mistake? It condemns any government officials or agency involvement with these acts on January 6th. It does not specify what actions are being taken to ensure that no East Hampton government official or person working in an East Hampton government agency had any such involvement, or even if there would, or even what will be done if such involvement is uncovered. After 10 days, a public guarantee has not been made by, that public guarantee has not been made that no EPD officer participated in the insurrection. The resolution that is being presented today is full of ice words, but we know that actually speak louder than words.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you. All right, next.
Caroline Cushing is next.
Okay, go ahead, Caroline.
Hello, Caroline, Main Street, Ward Four, picking up this theme. Some background, there were many strange and obscure flags and symbols on January 6th. They weren't really meant to be understood by the general public, but they were assigned to, like those looking, that violence, neo-Nazi sentiment, and white supremacy were the operating principles. And a thin blue line flag was also seen in the crowd at the Capitol and on at least one insurrectionist who reached the Senate floor with zip-tie handcuffs, prompting authorities to investigate if the handcuffs were meant for abducting lawmakers. The meaning and intention behind this version of the thin blue line that emerged in 2014 has been contested. The flag reportedly, some people believe serves as a sign of support for the police. But as it began appearing at rallies of right nationalists, most infinitely at the violent Unite the Right rally in Charlottesville, more and more have recognized its association with violent white supremacist action. Recognizing the flag's divisiveness, the San Francisco Police Department has banned its display, for example. And what does this flag signal now that it has been carried by a violent mob that sought to overturn a legitimate election and use the flag poles and fire extinguishers to attack, beat, and kill the police themselves at the Capitol? Its association with violence against our institution becomes undeniable. If we tolerate the flags and symbols we signal, the white supremacist violence and attacks are tolerated. As we move forward to begin to repair what shattered on the 6th, we need our institutional leaders to decisively, forcefully, and repeatedly, in this environment, reject any symbol, language, or act associated with white supremacy and violence. This kind of leadership is necessary always, but particularly urgent when we are in a society faced with so much disinformation. This may seem like a national problem that we don't have power to fix, but no, we know we are the microcosm of the country because of our problems at the high school. Recruiting flyers for white supremacist groups have been found around East Hampton. White supremacists are well, they attempt to recruit and infiltrate the police. This is well documented. So we can assume they're trying here. Although I prefer to think that these groups have not succeeded in recruiting within our police, it would be better to know for sure. To begin to know, I'd like Chief Alberti to respond to community demands made by Akin, December, January, and called for by 160 people in the change.org petition. You know, I'd be listening to hear him condemn the violence, disavow the thin blue line flag, and ban it from the department, hear that he's talking to his force about how white supremacy will not be tolerated and instruct the EPD to cooperate more fully with producing documents requested by the mayor's working group, Akin, probably other community groups. I hope to hear equally sound statements from...
Thank you, Caroline.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next person is Vicky Elson.
I also want to remind everyone that we have about five minutes left of public speak, and I see a lot of hands up. We're not going to get to all of you. So please, we have another meeting in two weeks. Please come back. But we do have some business we need to conduct tonight. So thank you.
Vicky Elson is next.
Okay, I'll just make it very brief. I was thrilled today when the nuclear football left the possession of President, ex-President Trump. And I am delighted on the same day to be congratulating Mayor LaChapelle and the other members of the city council who've done, like Mr. Wrist, who've been doing great work at the city level to get rid of nuclear weapons from the world forever. We're making headway. It's a really exciting week with the treaty entering into force in 50 countries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicky.
Do you want one more, Madam President?
Yes.
Julie Schwager, I hope I pronounced that right.
Very good. I'll be very quick. I just want to echo the appreciation and thanks that Tim and Wallace and Vicky Elson mentioned in your work to get rid of nuclear weapons. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Another one or not?
We'll take one more.
Mona Scott? Mona Scott?
You're on mute, Mona. There you go.
Mona, you have to take your care.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Mona Scott. I'm a resident of East Hampton. And following up on the last two speakers, I want to applaud the action of the mayor and the council in doing everything they can do to work against nuclear weapons. And it's such good timing with this Friday being the effectiveness date for the nuclear weapons ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. And with that, we will have to end public speak for today. But again, I encourage you all to come at the next city council meeting on February 3rd. Thank you. All right, moving on with the agenda. We have a couple of informational things. Barbara, do I need to read the election calendar or is it just?
No, that's just for information.
Okay, so we have that for the committee to look at. We also have received the planning board recommendation for the cannabis hours of operation. That, I believe, we will discuss further in the public hearing on February 3rd. Is that correct, Counsel Derby?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to acknowledge that we have received their report. So that will, that will be more detailed in a couple of weeks. Are there any other elected officials who would like to make a comment at this time? Counsel Flood?
Thank you, President Coniff. I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with the community my COVID story. Unfortunately, 2021 started off with a positive test result for me and those members of my household, there were four of us. Luckily, it was contained to our household. But I really do have to share with folks that I had two weeks of really what are maybe considered to be mild symptoms that were very difficult for me. And I'm a generally healthy person who's been extremely cautious. So I just want to remind folks that as we've unfortunately just surpassed the 400,000 mark in this country of deaths related to COVID, that now is absolutely not the time to become complacent, to let our guard down, and to ignore the rules of masking up and social distancing and washing hands. I can tell you, I had a very difficult two weeks. I'm now recovering and feeling less symptoms. I'm no longer contagious. But it was not only a very uncomfortable time for me, but it was a very scary time for me and my family to not know how the virus would affect each of us and then to not know who we might have spread it to inadvertently. And even to just lay here completely fatigued and wonder where on earth did I get it? So I just want to take this time to remind all my friends and neighbors to please remain vigilant, stay safe. Don't leave your home unless you have to, absolutely. And if you have to, please mask up. Unless you have an overwhelming health concern that keeps you from doing so, it really is the best defense that we all have against this virus. So thank you for the time to share that.
Thank you, Counsel Flood. I'm so glad that you are feeling and looking better. So keep up, you know, the masking and the hand washing for everyone. It's, it really is the best, the best answer at this point. So I'm glad you're feeling better. You look good. Counsel Wrist?
I want to echo Erica's comments. My entire daughter's family, she has six people, have COVID. They have been struggling with it. It has, as Erica said, been a lot more than just mild flu symptoms. I was over there earlier before they were positive, so I had a scare and I got tested and I was negative. So given my age and given the age of others in my family, I'm grateful that I didn't get it. Remember, everybody, it's not the younger people that we have to be concerned about. It's the seniors out there that you might transmit to. And we now have a variant that's much more contagious. So I know we want to support our businesses and we want to go out and try to help people, but I think the stay-home edict, we're a red zone now. I think we need to be careful. We need to be really careful. It is extremely scary and I had sleepless nights worried about my daughter. So I echo what Erica said. We need to be careful. Thank you, Erica. I'm glad you're open.
Any other counselors have anything they'd like to say at this time? Okay. So the next, there's a couple of things I want to kind of talk about and bring up. So the first one is around the creation of an ad hoc selection committee. As you all are probably aware, our principal assessor retired on December 31st. And we have had a job opening and a job requisition posted since, I want to say, November 19th, I believe. And we closed that requisition on January 8th. We received three applications. And in the interest of equity and confidentiality, those three individuals will be separately interviewed by the selection committee. And the selection committee will be charged with then presenting to the city council their finalist or finalists, if they want to present two to us, at which point then we will question those individuals and then we will make a vote publicly. This selection committee will meet in executive session to do their review of each of the candidates. So I want to first announce who the members of this committee will be. They will be the entirety of the appointment committee, folks. So Lindsay Rothschild, Counsel Kozinski, and Counsel Flood will all be part of this ad hoc committee. In addition, we're also going to have Counsel Wrist as part of the committee. The reason for that is that he has kind of a long history, as you all know, with the council. And he has been through selecting folks before and the process, so he will be there. We also have the option of including someone from the public, which we are going to do as well. And that member will be Gwyn Morrisey. You probably all remember Gwyn from when we were replacing Counsel Lynch, former Counsel Lynch. And so she is going to be a member of this ad hoc committee as well. So does anyone have any questions before I make a motion to approve the creation of an ad hoc selection committee? Okay, I will make a motion then to ask the council to approve my request to create a assessor selection committee ad hoc. Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. That committee, so in coordination with the Personnel Department of the city, the committee, and Lindsay, you're kind of the de facto chair of that committee since you are the chair of the appointment committee. I'll ask you to coordinate with the Personnel Department for the schedules of those individuals. The process we will go through, I'm not going to, it's kind of outlined in the document. I won't go through it, but we will have to open public meetings. We have to create a public meeting, immediately go into executive session, and then bring forth your recommendations. You may have to have three separate meetings for the three candidates. I will leave that up to you guys. All right, so the first meeting, you will let the committee know. Thank you. Okay. All right. As mentioned, there is a resolution that Counsel Zaret and I worked on last week. And just to be clear, I know a couple of people wondered why we hadn't said anything sooner. We can't, because of open meeting law, we can't talk about anything unless we are in session. And this is the next session we're having, so that's why we're talking about it now. So I would like to, first, I would like to thank Counsel Zaret for working with me on this. I also was a little frightened last week that I had COVID, so I was under the weather. But as it turns out, I don't. But apparently you can still get sick without having COVID. So I appreciate his help with this. And I also reached out to Chief Bob Alberti on this. He fully supported it and thanked us for putting this out. And he wanted people to know that he supported it. So with that, I'm also going to request that we make this motion and we make this vote tonight without objection on first... tonight without objection on first reading. So I will ask now, does anyone have an objection to voting on this on first reading? Hearing none. Counsel Zaret, would you please start the motion and the resolution, please?
Yes, in the form of the motion, I will read part of the resolution and then President Coniff, I believe he'll wrap things up. So in the form of a motion, this is a resolution in condemnation of the events of January 6th, 2021 at the United States Capitol Building. Whereas the fundamental foundation of our country's elections are based on democratic principles that guarantee that every vote is counted and assumes a free, fair, legal, and legitimate process. And whereas the winner of the United States presidential election process is reliant on the system of the Electoral College, where the winner receives at least 270 electoral votes. And whereas the outcome of the United States presidential election resulted in a popular vote of 81,283,098 votes for Joseph R. Biden, which is 51.3%, and 74,222,958 or 46.8% for Donald J. Trump, and Electoral College votes of 306 for Biden and 232 for Trump. And whereas despite widespread accusations of voter fraud resulting in multiple court cases, recounts, and audits, there was no demonstrable evidence found. And whereas the Constitution specifies a process of appointing electors, casting votes, and state certification with final certification joint session of the House and Senate on January 6th. And whereas 18 U.S. Code 23084 describes sedition as two or more persons in any state or territory or in any place subject to the jurisdiction of the United States who conspired to overthrow, put down, or to destroy by force the government of the United States or to levy war against them or to oppose by force the authority thereof or by force to prevent, hinder, or delay the execution of any law of the United States or by force to seize, take, or possess any property of the United States contrary to the authority thereof. And whereas on January 6th, 2021, a mob assembled in Washington, D.C. for the purpose of marching on the Capitol Building with intent to do damage to government property and buildings and to do harm to members of the House and Senate for the purpose of disrupting the certification of electoral votes in joint session. And whereas the rioters attended a rally hosted by the sitting president of the United States, Donald J. Trump, who is no longer president, and were incited by him and others close to him to disrupt the certification of the electoral votes, which had been duly certified by each state. And whereas rioters numbering in the thousands then descended upon the Capitol Building and were met by a small, unprepared, underprepared, and overwhelmed Capitol Police detail. And whereas demonstrations for racial justice this summer in Washington, D.C. were met with significantly greater numbers of heavily armed Capitol Police. And whereas rioters wore and displayed symbols of white nationalism and racism, erected a noose, and chanted "Hank Pence" and other treasonous, seditious, obscene, and racist words as they gathered in force. And whereas rioters armed with various weapons, implements of destruction, and tools of restraint entered the Capitol, ransacked the building and its chambers, causing members of both chambers of the House to take shelter, barricade doors, and protect themselves from possible harm. Rioters looted the Capitol, desecrated historic monuments, and stole items from open spaces, hallways, and offices. And whereas these riots directly resulted in the death of five people, countless injuries, and significant destruction of government property. And whereas the U.S. Joint Chiefs of Staff unanimously agreed, we witnessed actions inside the Capitol Building that were inconsistent with the rule of law. The rights of freedom of speech and assembly do not give anyone the right to resort to violence, sedition, and insurrection. And whereas the foundation of our democracy and the process of counting electoral votes from a legitimate, free, and fair election were disrupted and undermined.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of East Hampton condemns the violence that occurred during the riots and the attack on the United States Capitol Building on January 6th, 2021, and that these attacks were intent on destroying the fundamental foundations of our democracy and the legitimacy and freedom of our elections. And be it further resolved that the City Council of East Hampton denounces all expressions of racism, anti-Semitism, and white nationalism, both spoken and written, and the use of symbols whether created, adopted, or modified, which represent racism, anti-Semitism, or white nationalism that were on display by the rioters on January 6th, 2021. And be it further resolved that the City Council condemns involvement of any government officials or agencies in the planning, promotion, or execution of these attacks, and that these are considered acts of sedition and domestic terrorism. And be it further resolved that the City Council of East Hampton supports peaceful expression of free speech and the right to assemble, upholds the fundamental tenets of our democracy and the Constitution of the United States, and furthermore accepts the conclusive results of a free and fair presidential election. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution. I also want to give you an opportunity on the council now, if you would like to make any changes to this resolution, now would be the time to do so. Counsel Rist?
I do not want to make any changes. I rise tonight to fully support this resolution condemning the insurrection of January 6th and the actions of white supremacists on that day in our Capitol. It was horrible. I do note in President Coniff's letter that Police Chief Alberti signed on to this resolution, and I'm grateful for that. I just want to ask that if any city councillor has a concern or question regarding any issue in the police department, that they feel free to call Chief Alberti, as he will indeed answer the phone for any councillor. The only way forward in these troubled, polarized times in East Hampton is through dialogue. Let's try to have some dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rist. Counsel Rothschild?
I just want to say that I also fully support this. I think it's important that we make a strong statement. So thank you for the hard work that you put into writing this resolution. I do have a question, though, in terms of, do you know where the, is the carving with the blue, thin blue line still hanging in our police department?
It is not. It never was. It never.
Thank you. I don't know if that's clear in the community, so it'd be good to have that more publicized.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Zaret?
I just want to say, President Coniff, it was a pleasure working with you on this and collaborating with you. You know, I think that there are some questions about transparency, and I agree with you that because of open meeting laws, sometimes the way things unfold are not completely clear. The moment that these attacks in the Capitol took place, one of my first phone calls, was to the chief to decry the involvement of a variety of municipal officials and department members that we were seeing from across the country and sharing our mutual disgust for this event. I also had the opportunity to check in with other department heads as well, just to see how they were doing and express my dismay to see other departments across the country with involvement. But it was a pleasure, again, to work with you on this, and I'm glad that we have the support of our chief of law enforcement on this.
Counsel Gomez, and then Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you both, Counselor Zaret, and thank you, Madam President, for this resolution. I think the message that we're sending is clear. We are not tolerating anything similar to what happened two weeks ago. And thank you. But I just want to add something else. Today, we have, I think, a lot of hope. It's a lot of hope because we have a new president. But that doesn't mean that we change the page. The page is still the same, just with another leader. So racism is real. White supremacy is real, and a lot of symbols are real, and that we have to keep fighting to rid of them. Our community suffered for four years, and I hope today we start going in the right direction. Again, thank you for this resolution, and what happened two weeks ago was unacceptable.
Thank you, Counsel Gomez. Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. So I appreciate you guys putting this forward. I think it was well-written and really is a good, forceful statement. And I think that, you know, while we focus on some of the bad actors that, obviously, all of them on January 6th were bad actors that were going into the building and causing destruction, but I think that, you know, one of the things we need to recognize, and it wasn't stated in the resolution, is there's a reason why, you know, almost 50% of the country believes in a completely alternate set of reality. And I think that's something that we need to address, we need to say out loud, that, you know, we can have our opinions and we can have our disagreements, but we can't have alternate sets of facts. And the fact is, is, you know, almost 50% of the population is getting their information from sources that are not accurate, from sources that are not vetted, from sources that are not written by, you know, professionals and that have integrity. And I think it's important to recognize the difference of information that people are getting. And, you know, it's like, it hurts my soul to know that, you know, people that I was friends with in East Hampton have bought into the, you know, a lot of the stuff that they could, potentially even have, could have been at the Capitol. And what is the root of that? Like, you know, and I think this really exposed the, kind of, a rot in our society. And then I hope that we can address that and try to heal, you know, and try to get to the root of that rot. And I will tell you that my personal opinion is that root is information. And so I just encourage everybody to really be aggressive finding accurate information and to not believe conspiracy theories or, you know, things that are just crazy, you know? So anyway, I just wanted to put that as another piece of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Derby. Counsel Kuzinski?
I'd like to raise my support and appreciation for each of the counselors who spoke tonight. I am wholeheartedly with you in total agreement. It was totally appalling. And I never thought we'd ever see this in our lifetimes, what happened in Washington on January 6th. To the core, totally appalling. I would agree that anyone who participated in the breaching of the Capitol received the full impact of the law. I would agree that if there are police officers or any public employee, in fact, of this city who breached the Capitol, that they receive the full impact of the law. That we've had two weeks without a meeting just happened to be a matter of timing. And we are bringing this resolution forward. I congratulate those who wrote the resolution and for all of us who will be thinking about how we can work together to better our community and our nation.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Counsel Flood?
I just want to rise in support of this as well and thank you, Madam President, and Counsel Zaret for the hard work that you've done bringing this resolution forward for all of us. I want to just echo what Counsel Rist said. Dialogue, and as Counsel Derby pointed out, facts, those are really important. And I think it's the most important thing in this community that we can commit to in order to bring about unity. And in an email today, I said to somebody, I really hope that just what we can do here in our community is the small work that feeds into the larger. You know, we have to start where we are and having dialogue with our neighbors and with our department heads and with those around us, that's the most important thing we can do right now. So thank you for your hard work on all of this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I saw Counsel Zaret and then Counsel Rothschild.
I just want to say, just a couple of quick things, President Coniff. One, I wanted to say a name, and that name's Eugene Goodman. And I think that we've all read about his heroic acts during the attack on the Capitol and the breach of the Capitol, having the thought in the midst of the fray and the pumping adrenaline to realize that the Senate chambers were open and to lead a mob away from the Senate chambers as a decoy. It was a moment of incredible bravery. And apparently, he was named today the Deputy, Acting Deputy Sergeant of Arms and took place in the inauguration. I also just want to recommend that I think it's the most recent episode of Radiolab has a very good recap of the events that took place and the work of the Capitol Police, who I do believe that despite having bad leadership and being poorly supported, did a very good job. There's some very disturbing images of what took place in the tunnel or the pathway, the corridor that leads into the Capitol, of Capitol Police trying to hold back these hordes of people yelling "heave ho!", pushing on them, and the story of a Capitol officer who was pinned against the door and almost crushed to death, and his story pleading to this murderous mob that he has a family and kids to try to get out of there. And just that I'm thankful also that despite the fact that our FBI, I think, was somewhat hampered by our most recent commander in chief, or our past commander in chief now, it has been heartening to see the hundreds of arrests that have been made, and hopefully justice will be done. And I'll also say that it was difficult to see people who supposedly claim that they support law enforcement on the side of wrong, waving flags claiming to support law enforcement, but smashing it over the heads of the Capitol Police. And it's disgusting, and I think we know kind of where those people stand now. And it's kind of time to really draw a line between who really is on the side of what's right and good and who isn't. So again, Counsel Coniff, thank you for allowing me to work on this with you, and I'm glad we put this forward.
Counsel Rothschild?
I just want to bring up the issue of symbols again and find a way in our community to have conversations about them without it becoming kind of blocking in your ground. Because it's great that we made this big, we're making this large statement as a council, but the real work to do is here. And, you know, when a community says that a certain symbol that it makes them feel uncomfortable or threatened because that same symbol has been used in riots like we saw in Washington alongside white supremacist symbols or as anti-black lives matter symbols, and those symbols are used on T-shirts or other things by our local law enforcement. I'm not saying our local law enforcement is racist. I'm saying when someone uses a symbol and/or says something or uses a, you know, a slang towards another group, and that group says, hey, wait a minute, this makes us feel a certain way, can we make space for that dialogue? So it doesn't become, so we can listen. And if something makes someone feel bad, someone makes someone feel uncomfortable and threatened, even if that's not the intent of the person using the symbol or that's not the meaning they have behind it, can we find a place for those conversations? Can we understand that marginalized people need to feel safe? And if it means we have to sacrifice wearing something on our T-shirt, is that okay? I mean, my brother came home with a swastika drawn on his hand, and the person who drew it on him on the bus, he said, well, that's not what it originally meant. That's not what it means to me. Well, I don't care. It shook our family, and it was scary. So you have to think about what things mean to people, and our highest feeling should be, let's feel safe. In my article, and I'm going to address it because Counsel Rist brought it up sideways, but you said, my article is not about Chief Alberti or East Hampton. It was about a pattern across the country. And I feel like I should be able to speak to these issues without being called anti-police because I'm not anti-police. I'm just asking for a certain kind of leadership that I would like, and people ask me of the same. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rothschild. Anyone else before we vote on the resolution? Okay, Barbara?
Kate Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Dave P. Kuzinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Really good conversation. Appreciate passing it on first read. Appreciate passing it on first read. The other, the third thing that is on my personal agenda today is some of us, perhaps all of us, have received various inquiries, phone calls, emails regarding school internet access as well as school meals. Sometimes they are the same topic and sometimes they're separate topics, but it all comes down to equity and it all comes down to, are we serving the students and the children in this community equitably and completely through our school system and the school food and the school internet access? Certainly the times are very challenging right now in terms of a pandemic. And that, and that is hard and it's very hard. And so one of the unique, one of the unique opportunities as a city council that we have is to request that department heads come before us and respond to questions that we have. And so I, I requested that Dr. Leclerc and the Chair of the School Committee come to this meeting tonight. I thank you both for being here. I know it's a long meeting and I, I, first I told you to come at six, then 6:30, then seven, and here we are at 7:30. So thank you for hanging in there. So what, we presented a number of questions to Dr. Leclerc and to Chair Kuzinski. And I would like at this point, kind of what I'd like to have is, Dr. Leclerc, if you could kind of walk through the questions and your answers, and then I will open it up to the City Council to ask additional questions, clarifying questions, and then perhaps we can have a dialogue. I also want to be clear that the questions that were asked, some of them sound incredibly mundane and there could be like, why did you ask that question? Some of these were very foundational, just to get data so that we understood how many we were talking about. So that, that was kind of the impetus behind the questions that were asked. And so at this point, Dr. Leclerc, I'll turn it over to you if you would like to respond to the questions and then if we have more, we'll ask them.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Coniff. And I do want to just let everyone know that I also have my team with me here tonight. So if there are specific questions at, related to certain levels, most of my team is here someplace on one of the screens, as are several school committee members besides our Chair. So the, I, I won't dive too deeply into these. You can stop me if you'd like me to dive a little bit more deeply. But the first two questions, I think, are general information about the number of students we have in the district, how many students in each grade have absences. We collected some of that data for you. We didn't get to all of it, but I think we broke it down to give you some reference points. You can see probably some trends. Number three of these students, how many have been provided additional assistance with internet capability? We note that we've issued 24, we've issued hotspots to 24 families and 12 wireless access points have been issued to families to replace existing routers in the home. And we have done some support for families that have struggled to pay their bill. We've done that on a very limited basis, of course. And we have three ELL families. I, I don't want to get too detailed into here, in here because of equity issues. I don't want to identify any, any families, but we have supported some ELL families with technology. And I think that folks on the committee can read through that information. How many students by grade qualify for school-provided meals? That's, I'm, I'm not sure that, I, I, we answered it the best we could because we do not have free and reduced lunch this year. That was set aside last spring because of the pandemic. And last spring, we applied for a waiver to allow any of our families that wanted to access meals, the opportunity to do that. It was set to end in June, at the end of the school year. But we applied for and received a waiver to continue that during the summer. We've never provided meals in the summer before, but we felt there was a need and we wanted to provide that service. And then we continued to apply for the waivers. The most recent one was this winter, we applied for a waiver and that will take us through the end of the school year. So there's no one that qualifies for meals. Meals are accessible to students in East Hampton or children in East Hampton, I should preface it by saying.
Dr. Leclerc, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Please, go ahead.
That, maybe up to the point we're at now. So if I'm a family and I have a three-year-old, they're not registered in the school, I don't go to the school, is that child eligible? Can that child receive breakfast and lunch from this program?
Yes, and we've made that clear since March.
And, and the process by which I, who, would I, I would not necessarily get emails from the school because you don't know I exist. How would, how would I know that my child can get a meal?
So we shared that information out in newsletters and newsletters sometimes go to daycare centers in the vicinity of the community. It's on all of our Facebook pages. It was on the city website. It's on the updates that I put out. So it's pushed out in a lot of different ways.
Madam President, Counselor Gomez has his hand up. I don't know if you could see that.
Counselor Gomez, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a question about how many student qualify for, for the meals. Thank you, Dr. Leclerc, for being here with us tonight. But is, if it is possible to tell us how many lunches the school serve every day? Because it's not about who qualify for it, but if it is possible to know how many lunches the school serve every day?
Yes. We have actually our food service director is on the call with us tonight. If I can call on Ken to give you that, that information?
Sure.
Ken, where are you?
Ken LaPage. He's, he's putting his camera on right now.
I don't see him.
He's on here, Dan.
Yeah, I got him.
You can go ahead, Ken, or you can turn on your camera if you'd like.
He's unmuted, but we're not hearing him. Check your microphone settings, Ken. Well, maybe he'll come back. He's trying to unmute himself, but it's not working.
So we, so I can tell you in general, in the spring, we were providing approximately 300 meals per week. That's not necessarily 300 individual children because they get two meals per day. In the summer, we offered the program and we expanded it to a third site in the summer for pickup. And numbers dramatically decreased in the summer. I, I, you know, we don't know why. Some people ended up going back to work, finding, you know, putting their children in camps or daycare situations, et cetera. In the fall, we started off a little bit lower. We've climbed back up steadily as the winter has gone along. And I think we're up to about 300 meals a week again.
So 300 meals a week, is that seven days a week of two meals?
Yes.
So an individual child, if they were getting the, the meals all week, would get 14 meals?
Yes.
Okay, so 300.
And if Ken's on here, he'll, he'll text me if I'm wrong. Or he'll pipe up himself.
Would that, um, I don't know if anybody else has a calculator out, but that is 21 students. That can't possibly be right.
Well, then I must be wrong. Maybe it's 300 students. Let me see. You're right, you're right. It's probably around 300 students.
Okay, so 300 students times two meals a day, times seven days a week.
Oh, is Ken here? Ken's here now. He's going to tell me where I was wrong.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Barely, Ken, if you.
Speak up, Ken. Uh, we lost you, Ken. Can't hear you, Ken. Now you're connecting again. Try it now, Ken. Unmute yourself, Ken.
I think he's aware of the steps he needs to take. It's not working.
Is that better?
There we go, Ken.
Oh, about time. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight.
So Ken, we were just talking about the number of meals that are available and provided to students on a weekly basis. Do you know what that number is?
Yeah, just to give you a little bit of some, some numbers, in May, when we were doing bus services, we did 18,200 meals in May. In December this year, we did 17,000 meals. So when we were doing Boston and to now when we're doing a deliver, not delivery service, it's, it's very close, very, very similar numbers. So we, we averaged about 300 meals a day and they'd get two breakfasts and two lunches. We're doing about 600 meals a day.
Okay, so that, okay, so that makes a little more sense. So around 300 students, so how many, how many humans are you feeding on a daily basis?
We're doing about 300 a day.
Okay, that was the same number I got, so you win, Ken. You win the prize. Okay, so today, or back in May, you were feeding about 300 kids and it fell off a little bit in December, for whatever reason. So, and, and how are those meals allocated? So I know you've got various vendors, I think, or, or support groups that are helping with these 300 or 600 or 18,000 meals. Is that split among different providers, if you will?
Not sure what you mean.
No, we have, we, we have a contract with a, with a food service provider. So we, we pay a company. That's, that's what Ken does. He has employees at the high school and they put these lunches together every day.
And that in, what, what is that group?
Chartwells.
Chartwells, okay, thank you. Then where do power packs come in?
Power packs are separate, that's a private group that provides backpacks with food in them for the weekends. They piloted the program last year at Maple Elementary and they do it at Maple and Whitebrook this year. And I think we have about 35 families that get backpacks of food. That has nothing to do with the school. That's a private nonprofit that wanted to collaborate with us and we were eager to do that collaboration. So it started last year when we were actually in school.
And do you, do you pay them as well on a per meal basis or is it?
No, no, no. That has, they're nothing to do with us. They drop backpacks off and we get them to the kids.
But how do they know how many to drop off?
They have some kind of relationship with the families or put some information out. I think they did flyers last year to.
Dr. Leclerc, can I speak up?
Well, there's Judy Avril from Maple, who does the power packs in her building.
Yeah, I've been working with Shelley Marsh since the beginning of this and we put out a flyer to all families. We also include a link in our newsletters that go out monthly. They can sign up at any time. They just have to call our administrative assistants who work really closely with Shelley. And we just keep an ongoing list. So we add names as soon as we get them and they start receiving them the following Friday. And it's all volunteer-based. They work, Shelley works with the, the food, the food distribution center. I can't think of the name right now.
The Community Center.
Yeah, the Community Center, but the bigger one.
The Western Mass Food.
Yes, thank you, Food Bank. Western Mass Food Bank. So she's secured several grants. So this is all free to, free to families. And do you know, Judy, how many families, I think you just said, 35 families or 35 children? We had 50 last year and I believe we're close to 50 this year at Maple alone. So, and I believe Senator Pepin is doing it as well as, as Whitebrook.
And at Whitebrook, we also have about 40 families. We just added six more families last week.
Okay, so that's an additional 90 on top of the 300 that Chartwells is providing. And volunteers deliver those to their homes. Right. But, but in terms of food in bellies, regardless of its source, 300 come from Chartwells and an additional 50, 90 children are getting their meals through a different way, which is power packs. Is that accurate? Yes, in addition to. Oh, in addition to? Yes, so those same families are also often picking up during the week.
Correct.
Madam President, Erica has her.
I don't understand. I'm sorry.
Erica has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Flood, Counsel Flood, go ahead.
It's okay. I just wanted to clarify, that 300 is across the school age population? So that's elementary, middle and high school? Is that correct?
It's actually across, we'll, we'll feed any child. We say zero to 18. Obviously, we don't have baby food, but as the example Counselor Coniff gave, you know, a two-year-old or a three-year-old, if a parent wants a lunch for them, that's part of the 300 as well, even though they might not be in our school district yet.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And do they have to register for that or do they just drive up and pick it up?
No registration at all.
Yeah, but they, they usually call, in the, in the spring, we gave out Dale Doron, the business manager's email and phone number. And people let her know that they were interested in getting the meals. So they did give their names. And they also, you know, usually it's just a one-time thing. I'm coming down or I need, in the spring, they said, I needed some meals delivered. How many do you need? I need three at my house because I have three children, you know? Or, you know, I need to pick up for my neighbors as well and they have two children. So we would just ask for that information. There's no income qualification. There's no private information that's given.
Counsel Rothschild, I see your hand.
I think, thank you for being here and thank you. I'm glad this meal program is happening. So thanks for the work on that. I just want to make sure that everyone's taking advantage of it that needs it in our What was I saying? So a lot of people are chatting on Facebook and such that they don't, the whole signing up thing. So I guess a lot of people did sign up, but apparently a lot of people are picking them up that didn't sign up because there's all this discussion going, what? We need to sign up now. So I guess there just needs to be clarity. I don't know about clarity, but if you need people to sign up for more meals to be made, that needs to be made clear. It just, I just saw a lot of confusion expressed.
That's what it is. That's what it is, yeah.
I'm also wondering, since it's a great opportunity for people to get fed from as young as two, and like you said, we might be missing them because they're not in the schools. I'm just wondering if there's a way the city can partner, and the mayor's here too. So she goes, a way the city can partner to do some kind of direct mail to families with children to see if people are hungry and need food. Because email and is not, or flyers aren't, isn't going to reach a lot of people in the way that direct mail is. And I just received a great direct mail about COVID, so she cheers the public health and the city for that. So that's just, I'm just thinking of the way we can partner. I mean, it's, these are all our residents, these are all our families. And just the, the fact that we have this opportunity to give people food 0-18 that need it, like, I hope no one's not getting it that needs it.
Agreed.
Can I ask a question of Ken? Ken, if, if you're today giving out, I don't, my numbers are all messed up, but let's, 300 a day or 600 a day, I think you said, 600 meals a day to 300 kids. How much higher could you go? Is that, are you maxed at capacity?
Right now, we're working. Um, right now, we're working in one facility and with the COVID and the regulations, it's hard to succeed apart. We try to keep our staff small. So at the one location right now, we pretty much are maxed out, but, I mean, we'll, we do, we'll do whatever we need to do. We've, we've reached, we've had probably eight, 10 different families in the last week that have come. And, um, so it just keeps getting bigger every, to me, every week it seems to be growing, which is a good thing.
Yep, and I just, I, I could be really thick on this and I'm not getting it. So if you are making 600 meals today and some people have signed up, some people haven't, we don't know. If, if you were told, Ken, your 600 a day isn't enough, can you bump it up to 700, 750 a day? And you came back and said yes. Do we need to, just by virtue of saying we need additional volume, is that enough for a family to just drive through and say, I need four meals? Or do they need to provide additional information?
This is what we do. We're, we're ready for whatever we need. It's, it's, people should come. I wish people could just come to see what the team does. It's, it's amazing what we've done. We've had to change our whole way of food service since March and it's, it's been incredible. I'm just so proud of what we've done and under the circumstances, it's been truly, truly amazing.
It is. It's great. Um, I think I saw Counselor Gomez and then Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, for clarification, um, the number that I have from, uh, Dr. Leclerc is that we have four, uh, 1,434, uh, student enrolled in our system. But we are just feeding 390 childs. So basically, we're feeding only 36% of the students that we have. That is excluding the, this, the, the kids there zero from three years old because they're not part of the, uh, of the school system and probably some of the kids there 17 through 18 years old because probably they're al- already graduated from, um, from the high school. So, um, that's number is correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is any reason the, that the school didn't do any research to find out why people are not getting the lunches? Because we are only feeding only 36%, 30, 50%, 60, 70%?
I think that we based this initially off of information from previous years' free and reduced lunch levels. Our highest building that would have free and reduced lunch would be Maple at about 40%. The other buildings are much lower, um, in the 20s and 30% range. So this number that you've just quoted, Omar, seems to be in line with other years. Of course, we know the pandemic can create different situations. In putting this information out as much as we have, we've heard from many families that have said to us, I appreciate that the school district is doing this. I don't need this for my child, but I appreciate that you're doing it for other children. So we know there are many families in the community that don't need this. So it's, you know, we're, we've never been a school district where 100% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's not East, that's not East Hampton. So this percentage seems to be in line with the data that we have from previous years. And are we missing some? I'm, I'm sure on a given, any given day, we probably are and there's always an opportunity to try to do more. So as Ken said, you know, he's willing to take on more and more and more. My only caveat for Ken would be that if 100 people show up tomorrow that he doesn't have food for, it makes it challenging. And that's why, to answer one of the couns, I think it was Counselor Coniff, it's helpful if we just have an idea of what's coming. Not every day, but just say, I'm interested in signing up for this or getting my name in for this now. And, you know, just so Ken can increase the number of food that he's ordering or get in more staff so that he's prepared.
Well, would, and then I'll, I'll defer to the mayor and then Counselor Rist and then Counselor Zerrit. But I guess the one question I would ask of Ken is, instead of names and addresses, can we just tell you, we have 40 people, 40 kids, who, who are not being served today? So that would increase your number. Would that be a sufficient notification to you for additional meals? To just say we need 40 more?
Yes, absolutely. We just, you know, we just need a little time because we got vendors. We have to, you know, purchase our food and, because at this point, at this point for the last six months, we've been pretty steady between, we know we're going to get 280 to 320 a day. So we're, we're, you know, we, we got all our food in for that, those numbers. So something like that, we would need just a little, you know, a few days because we get a couple of deliveries a, a week, so.
I think that's fair. Okay, thanks, Ken. Mayor, I will, I will defer to you and then I will go back to the city council for questions, but go ahead, mayor.
Thank you very much, President Coniff, for, for giving me the opportunity. So I, uh, Ken, I don't know if you remember me, but we worked together years ago at the, the Center for School Crisis and Intervention. And, and I know that your team not only works very hard, but are incredibly, um, flexible. And I, I, I do remember just wonderful flexibility on, on your team to, to make certain days and, and times just great for our kids and families. That said, given Chartwell's, um, accounts throughout Western Mass, I, I just wonder if, um, I'm very concerned about, one, communication and getting the word out. Two, I am, I'm under the impression that, um, East Hampton Public Schools and, and the city are not only responsible for students who are in our public schools, but also any school age child, similar to child find. And given that, um, can we have, uh, I, I guess, if, if 100 kids show up, there's only 70 meals. Can we take or have an opportunity for there to be a sign up list? And given your accounts in larger cities and bigger kitchen facilities, we can then get that list and have volunteers deliver those meals pretty quickly?
Um, that's a good question. Um, I'm, I'm sure we could. It's just, we need, we need some planning, absolutely. Like I said, our team, we're, we're ready to do anything we need for this community. So whatever needs to happen, we're, we're, we're ready and willing.
Great. Um, thank you. And, and I don't know if it's a question for Superintendent Leclerc or, or back to Ken. Do we have an obligation, are any student, um, zero from 18, regardless of where they go to school or not, um, can they pick up meals?
Yes, we haven't turned anyone away.
Great. I, I know. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Yeah, we have school choice students from Holyoke that come and get their meals from us where we've been feeding, um, South Hampton kids because their community didn't do.
It's funny you say that. We, we have a couple of families from Hoyolk that they don't like the food that they're serving in Hoyolk, so they come here to get our food, so.
Don't turn away anyone.
Excellent. Thank you both.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I think I saw Counselor Rist next.
My concern is logistics because the purpose of this meeting is to try and get the word out, I guess, on food and internet and on the food question. I remember picking up some lunches and food for my son's kids. He has three kids in the school, school system. And I went there and I was amazed, by the way, Ken, at how wonderful your people were handing out food at the back of the high school. And I asked, do I need to tell you who these are for so that they knew that they were kids in the school system? And they said, no, we don't need to know that. So it's obviously that you're trying to support anybody, uh, who comes. And i- if you're coming for food, obviously you need it. So my question is, if we do a better job of communicating, and this is a start, hopefully people who listen in tonight might put the word out. Going to, I guess, it was, uh, Peg, the mayor or Peg who said this. If you had a situation where suddenly you had a lot of people show up at the back of the high school, wherever you hand out food, and you ran out, taking their names and getting food to them would be the solution? I mean, how do we help you logistically? Because I'm hopeful that people get the word out, that we get the word out and more people show up. But I also don't want you to have to turn somebody away. So I'm wondering, is that the solution, getting their names and you deliver food? Is that what we're talking about here? I don't know. I'm just asking.
It's tricky. Under the, under the waiver we're at, you really, it's kind of confidentiality and you're really not supposed to get any names. So it's, it's tricky. I mean, in our production facility, we're, we have meals ready to go if we have 20, 30 people, 40 people. So we always have meals ready to go. So, you know, hundreds of one thing, but like 30, 40 people, we've always have, we have production people in the back that are ready to go at any time and we do have product available. So putting them together, you know, sometimes we tell people, just give us five minutes and everybody's really good about, you know, they don't have a problem waiting, but, um, yes. We usually have extra product on hand, ready to go. We don't want to waste, of course, I mean, which we haven't had a problem, but, uh.
I'm just concerned about your stock. I mean, if suddenly you have a large influx of people who find out about this.
You know, and the last, and the last two weeks, we've seen probably eight, 10 families coming and saying, wow, you know, we didn't know this was going on. It's, it's, you know, now when we're in January and it's almost a year, it's just, uh, you know, and I think we've done a pretty good job of getting the word out. I just, I'm not sure what else we need to do as far as getting the word out.
Counselor Zerrit has had his hands up and then I'll go to Counselor Rothschild.
Uh, thank you, President Coniff. Um, and actually, uh, where Ken left off kind of segues well into the question I wanted to ask. And first of all, I just wanted to thank, um, the superintendent and Ken and the team for, for coming here tonight to answer these questions. And, uh, so far, it's certainly been very enlightening and I want to thank the members of the city council that invited them. So you've been asked, I think, some really good questions by us. Um, and certainly, uh, you have had to rapidly adapt from, um, a brick and mortar situation pre-pandemic to having to operate now in, in the setting of the pandemic. And I'm sure that's switched your operation significantly and you've had to do that rather rapidly. It's kind of like going from running a hospital to a mass unit. So we've kind of thrown a bunch of scenarios out to you. But what I'm more curious is, you're the ones who are implementing this on a day-to-day basis. And I'm kind of curious from your perspective, what some of those strategic gaps in implementation might have been that you're experiencing and where, you know, us as municipal partners, city council, mayor, et cetera, what you might have identified where we can help you?
Is that, is, um, oh, and is that directed at Ken or myself?
That is directed at anyone who, uh, that, I'll, I'll let you lead off, Superintendent, and then Ken. Because I'm just curious what, what problems you've identified and, and where you might still find that you, you're either lagging or there's gaps and you need help.
Yeah, so, thank you. Well, I think that the question around, are we getting the message out to everyone? Does everyone know about this service that would need to access this service? Is absolutely a question. Could we do something more? If there, you know, I, I would love to hear ideas, suggestions. You know, because we've been putting this information out. And so obviously not, you know, I, I, I can assume that not everybody gets the information. And that's, that's on us to reflect on and see where we could do more. Someone made the suggestion of the postcards. That would be a wonderful idea. On the school department side, obviously I don't have the addresses of everyone in the community. So that would need to be on the, the city side to assist us with that. You know, the other, the other piece for us is, um, reaching the families that are having difficulty picking up the meals. We have a certain timeframe that the meals are available. And we have reasons for that. You know, we're cleaning the buildings. The building has to be cleaned. We need to have the building empty for a period of time before we have the custodians in to clean the cafeteria. So there are, there's a rationale behind the timeframe that we chose, but we realize that's not convenient for everyone. But, a- and, and some people are limited to getting to our site or sites. And so that is a concern as well. In the spring, when there was a state shutdown and nobody was in school, we utilized our buses. But right now, we are using our buses to transport students. We have students that, we run four buses a day going to our vocational programs right now. We only have seven buses and, you know, our hope is that we're going to start bringing students back in the next month or so. So we need our buses and so we don't have a means to transport meals to people, you know, through our transportation system any longer. So I definitely think that that's a challenge, that, you know, if we had assistance with that, I think it would benefit people in the community.
I, I saw, I think I saw Counselor Rothschild. I think you were next and then Counselor Gomez. Now, move on. Counselor Gomez.
Just, uh, thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, I hear from the Dr. Leclerc's team that we feed, uh, some childs from Holyoke. Any from your team have the numbers, how many kits we are feeding from the Holyoke town?
I don't. I know that in the, I know in the spring, we had some students that were school choice students going to school in East Hampton, but they lived in Holyoke. So they would be eligible to get their food from Holyoke, but they were, they were driving here. So I don't know if it was just one family. Ken, is it more than one family?
Yeah, I think we do have a couple more families. Um, you know, with this waiver in the, in the, right now, anybody can go anywhere. I could go to East Hampton. I mean, the East Almeado, I could go to South Hadley. It's, unfortunately, right now, you can go anywhere you want to purchase meals.
So people can, so people, they don't have to register or give the personal information to go get lunches?
Absolutely not right now. The waiver that we have, you do not need any information.
Okay, thank you.
Right, it's just a reminder, it's helpful to have an idea if there's going to, if, if there's going to be an increase in numbers for Ken for ordering and staffing.
A- and that's fair. I mean, you have to make sure you have the resources. So if you're sitting at 300 kids a day and we know that in the last month, um, through outreach, Lindsay, you may have a better number, but let's call it 50 additional kids per day or maybe it's 50 meals, I don't know. But would it be sufficient, Ken and Dr. Leclerc, if we came to you and said, we know you've been feeding 300 kids. We know that once we get the word out and you are ready with your resourcing, that number will go to 350 a day. You're telling me that all we have to tell you is the number and give Ken the appropriate time to ramp up to get to that production level? And then we can just, through a variety of means, and I, I really do like a citywide postcard that goes to everyone and, you know, use it or don't use it. And then, Ken, they can just, on a day-to-day basis, go in and that's the notification that we've given you. You need 50 more meals or people or whatever. Would that be sufficient, Ken?
We'd be ready to go. Absolutely.
Love that answer. Mayor, did you have something to say? You're on mute.
I heartily disagree. Um, I believe that, um, we've had kids who have not accessed food for over a month. We should have solved this. Are bad. We had a lot on our plates. I do believe, literally, no pun intended, and I believe starting tomorrow, after this meeting and the work of a kind and Counselor Rothschild and other people in the community, we have the, uh, we have the resources through Chartwells and using other cities and towns until we get a stabilized number to start this tomorrow. We don't need names, we've been told we need names. We have a waiver that is, is statewide, enough. Let's put meals in the hands of kids. We have volunteers, we'll bring them to neighborhoods. I know other schools and districts, departments know that. I bought three vans with COVID money, school has one. There's a white van with fifteen passenger white van that can be used and driven by any city employee. We changed that policy, um, around who could drive our vehicles or not about a year and a half ago. Council on Aging has another small transit van that can be used in the off hours. This can start tomorrow and I heartily apologize for fricking missing the boat on this. But enough, tomorrow, 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 tomorrow.
Okay, Ken, you've heard it. Uh, so we'll get, we'll get back to that, Ken, in just one second. I want to see if there's other questions from counselors. Um, Counselor, oh my, Counselor Peak and Counselor Flood. Peak, why don't you go first and then Counselor Flood?
Madam President, um, we've talked a lot about the food program and obviously that's extremely important. And this has all been very enlightening, so thank you for your time. Uh, I know that we were also, I, I've heard some concerns about, um, the uh, sort of internet assistance situation. If, it would be more useful to conclude the food thing and then move on. I'm happy to sort of table it, but I, I just wanted to see that I do have some questions on the internet front, uh, for when that, like, is this a good time or should I hold back and, well, we're done with the food thing? Does that make more sense?
Well, we can, I, I think the mayor pretty much had the last word on the word thing, but I do want, on the meal thing, but I do want to wrap, and yes, we had a two-pronged agenda tonight for, um, Superintendent Leclerc. One was around food, food I think is really critically important, internet access also critically important. So what I'm hearing is that any family tomorrow can go get a meal. And, um, I'm going to work under that assumption unless, you know, someone tells me differently, but I think that's what we've arrived at, is that families can go tomorrow to pick up their meals. And absent, uh, different information. So hang on, I know a lot of people have a lot of things to say, so let me just get my thoughts out here. So we believe, or some of us believe, that tomorrow any child in East Hampton could go to the, in the, at the appointed times, pick up the appropriate number of meals that they need tomorrow. Is tomorrow Thursday? Yeah, tomorrow. And everything would be fine and/or if we can't get it from Ken, we can get it from another community. So, uh, we're going to go with that because the mayor has decreed it. But I want to give Counselor Flood first and then, um, Chairperson Kuzinski, I'll give you an opportunity after Counselor Flood.
Can I just say one thing in terms of the service delivery model? Is there currently being?
Excuse me, excuse me, who are you?
This is Dale Dora, Director Business Services.
Thank you, Dale.
The meals are not being distributed every day of the week.
Okay.
The next day that they, under the current service delivery model that we've advertised and been operating under since March, the meals are picked up on Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Okay.
On Monday for Monday, Tuesday, on Wednesday for Wednesday, Thursday, on Friday for Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay.
So meals would not be available again to anyone until Friday unless we change the service delivery model.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Uh, Chairperson Kuzinski. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Flood, sorry.
I'm going to lend my services, I do have experience driving a fifteen-passenger van. So once the mechanism for delivery, whether it's to neighborhood, like centralized neighborhood pickup spots, because I am hearing there are confidentiality issues in collecting addresses. So for instance, if Parsons Village could be a delivery spot or, you know, somewhere in the plains, I'm happy to volunteer to drive the municipal van. So please let me know if I can help in that way.
Thank you, Counselor Flood. Okay, now, now, hang on, Counselor Zerrit, go ahead, Cynthia.
Okay, um, I just wanted to make a couple of points. We have been trying to get the message out since March and I want everybody to understand, it's not a perfect system, but it's not just that we're not getting the message out enough. The need is growing. The longer we are in this pandemic and the longer that families are struggling, the more the, the need is growing. And what we're finding in the last couple of weeks is that there are families that need that, those extra meals and have not understood that they had access to them, for whatever reason. But what is really important is that we have not been given a number. So if people are finding out that this family and this family needs food, we need to know that number so that we can give it to Ken and say, Ken, you need to do a hundred extra meals as quickly as possible. He needs a couple of days if we're going to do this straight from Ken's site, he needs a couple of days. If we're going to have help with transportation and by using Chirtpack in other towns, great, we can find those. But that is going to require us having some addresses. So I just want to have people understand, this is a problem we've been working on for a long time. It's growing, it's not getting smaller. And I imagine as these numbers continue to grow, it is going to get much bigger. So I ask everybody, if you begin to get more and more of an inkling from this family and that family, call us. If you can't reach Allison, call me. If you can't reach me, and you should be able to reach the two of us, call another school committee member so that we can get that message to Allison and to Ken and that production can keep growing. I just want people to understand, it is not that we don't want to make more food, nor is it that we are not trying to reach out, but there have been instances where people know of a group of people who need food and we are almost the last to know. We should really, since Ken and Allison are in charge of churning out that food, they should be really the first to know and a phone call is pretty quick. So that's all I'm imploring any city council or anybody to do is pick up the phone and call us and just say, hey, we need fifty more meals.
We need fifty more meals.
We got it.
Okay.
We're hearing that tonight, but I believe, and that's why I'm saying this, that that number is still going to grow.
Yeah.
I do not believe that that's going to be enough. And we don't want to make so much that we have food going to waste because God forbid, nothing should be wasted now.
Understood.
Um, but as those numbers continue to grow, please just call us and we will add it to the list.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things. First, um, I just want to say that it's really easy from this side to say, please call us. But at, at the statement, you were saying that the school knew that we're going to have more people in need and, but we wasn't ready for that. So I think that was a lack of preparedness for the, for the, for the next step, for the next few months, for the next week. And I think that the school department have to do the outreach to find out how many kids are, are, are hungry. How we find out was knocking doors. And of course, we went to the, to, to the, to the school committee to, to ask for some questions, to, for, for some answers. Because after a year, for me, is, is, you know what, it's enough. It's, it's too much, we're spending so much money and all this stuff and we have to take care of our kids. That's the reason we went to the school committee, that's the reason we're doing this, because after a year is, if, if enough time to find out what is happening in our community.
Okay, um, we want to get onto the internet. Counselor Zerrit, do you have something different to add to the conversation? Because we want to get onto the internet thing right now.
I could send an email, I'll copy you on an email.
JP, hang on, go ahead.
Uh, I, I, I agree, I think we, we could, uh, I, I'll, I'll just send an email. It, it is, it's a new question, but I, I, for the sake of, uh, of brevity, I'll, I'll just send an email. I'll copy you on an email to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kuzinski.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as a, a practical matter, uh, I've been told by the superintendent that everyone who has called in and said, we'd like to have a meal, has, they, they've gotten a meal. Is that, is that correct, Dr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Okay, so it would seem to me reasonable, we don't know if the number's ten, twenty, fifty, a hundred, two hundred people. They're really, it would be very helpful if folks could have a centralized calling place to be, so that we could kind of be prepared for this. Uh, is, is there a specific number you'd care to share, Dr. Leclerc? Is it Dale's, Dale's number?
It's Dale's number, it's on our website, on the, uh, under the COVID section of our website, there's a section on school meals which describes what our meal process is for grab and go meals. Dale's number is there, both her email and her cell phone number. And I'll tell you her cell phone number now. It's, I mean, her office number, I'm sorry, four one three five two nine fifteen hundred and its extension one two eight.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. Uh, it, it's not surprising to me that people would come up and say, geez, I didn't know about this. We have people who move into the community. Tenants come, tenants go, people sell houses, buy houses. There are new people, there are people who've been here who, for one reason or another, aren't connected. I hope, uh, we're able to continue to get the word out. And I know all of us believe we want to make sure that the need is fulfilled, that every child, uh, has food every single night. So we'll do whatever we can to make sure. Uh, if there's someone in, uh, if they can't reach Dr. Leclerc or Dale, please call me. Our number at my house is five two seven zero zero one zero. I will make sure that, uh, the proper people are informed and we're able to make the connections. I'm sure there are plenty of volunteers who'd like to assist with delivery. And, uh, so I think this community can pull together and continue to meet the need as it, as it continues to increase.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. All right, um, if there are no further questions, I would like to move on, uh, to the question of internet. Um, I know we, we touched on it the first couple of questions. If you want to continue, so let me, maybe I'll try to summarize what your questions were. So you have, um, you have given some cellular hotspots out to twenty-four families who do not currently have internet. You've given out, uh, you are paying for the Spectrum Internet Service for two families for a full year. Do you know when that expires? Is that through June?
Yes, September next, yeah.
And with, while maintaining confidentiality, is there a reason those two, is there, is there something about those two particular families that allow them to have that capability and can more be funded, uh, in total?
So, you know, what we're trying to do is really the customer service piece of our role in remote learning. And our educators are reaching out to families to find out what their challenges are. Their, our principals are calling families to find out what challenges are. These are two names, uh, or two families in particular that principals brought to me in the district and said, um, these families were really struggling because of some issues due to the pandemic. They had multiple children in the district, the children were struggling. The family was, um, at their wits end, you know, didn't know how to proceed. So I said, well, let's, let's troubleshoot everything we can. The hotspots weren't going to work. The, you know, the, uh, getting a new wireless router wasn't, you know, we tried everything that we could and this was really the only option that was left. So we said, well, in order for these four kids or whatever, however many children there were in each of the families to be successful, we needed to make this happen, so that's what we did.
Okay.
But it's through, it's through the contact from the administrators to really know the situation of the families.
Okay. You also indicate that, uh, three, uh, ELL families had hotspots and, and/or T-Mobile. I don't even know what those are, but, um.
Wireless access point.
Oh, thank you. I should know, but I don't. Okay, so, uh, not a huge amount of people, from looking at these numbers, thirty, thirty-five people-ish or families are getting some level of additional support through hotspots, uh, the T-Mobile thing and/or having their Spectrum bill paid in full with. I'm assuming it's a, it's additional bandwidth that you gave them if they have multiple children in the home. Because certainly the low level won't cut it. Okay. Right, uh, you've also provided Chromebooks to any child who needs it. In your answer, and I just want to clarify this, you talk about there were kind of older Chromebooks that don't have fully the capability that is needed for remote learning, but that you had ordered six hundred additional ones. So are the ones that were not great for remote learning, have those all been replaced with these new ones? How did?
They're in the process of being replaced right now. It was primarily in grades K through five. And so they came in, in December and they're be, they've been configured or they're in the process of being configured, um, for our students. And they've distributed them to all the kindergarten students and they're making their way up first, second grade, third, fourth, fifth, I think is going to be in another week or so. Um, and then that will finish it.
Okay, and these, these new ones replaced old ones? Or are they, okay, so they have a better capability, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if any of the counselors, before I go too much deeper into the COVID funding that you may have received and so forth. I know Counselor Peak wanted to talk about a couple of things, so I'll turn it over to you, Counselor Peak.
Thank you. Yeah, so when, when it comes to like the wireless hotspot, are the educators finding that those things actually provide enough bandwidth to be like streaming classes and everything like that? Like, is that, is that working out all right?
What I have heard, Counselor Peak, is that, um, it's, it's kind of, um, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, and I'll give you an example. We have some students that we hear from that are saying they're having challenges. They have the hotspot in their home and sometimes it's a matter of, okay, where are you sitting in relation to that hotspot? You need to move closer, you need to move into the other room to get closer to that hotspot. You need to close out some tabs so that you don't have so many things going on in the background. So we've been working with students and educators, classroom educators have like a set of questions that they'll ask students that are struggling with connectivity. Similar to tonight's Zoom meeting, you know, there were people that kind of get on and off. A lot of people keep their cameras off so that they can hear what's going on a little bit more. So it's just a matter of troubleshooting.
Okay, do you mind if I ask a couple of questions? Uh, how much does it actually cost to provide one of these hotspots to a family?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can let you know, I can email you.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. I'm just wondering what the actual cost is relative to paying for a sort of low-level cable connection. Because my personal experience with those hotspots has been not amazing. And, um, if it, you know, if, if the marginal cost to upgrade to something more stable was relatively small, I, I might recommend that you look into doing that on a wider basis. And, okay, one more question. Do you feel, I, I, and I don't exactly know, it sounds like you, you laid out a little bit of what the process is, but do, do you feel that, that the teachers are, are, are having a, a good, like, uh, are having success at identifying which students are having trouble here? I know, I've just heard stories in press from other cities about students who have not, um, attended class in a long time, uh, things like that. Are, is, are, do you feel that you're having a, like, if there was a student who was having kind of? Are is are do you feel that you're having a like, if there was a student who was having connectivity issues or technology issues? Do you feel like there's a process in place to quickly identify and respond to the needs of those families?
Yes, I absolutely do, Counselor Peak. As with anything, could it could it be better? We're always looking to refine refine what we do. But obviously, in the summer and into the fall, our teachers went through a lot of training. You know, last year when we shut down in March, it was crisis mode, obviously, and we did the best we could. But we really put a lot of time and effort into training and support for our educators over the summer and into the fall as far as professional training and giving them the tools they would need to observe what students are doing. And I can tell you, I can give you an example. They have a tool called Securely. And that's a way for parents and our educators to kind of monitor what students are doing on their school devices. So they can kind of see, oh, Johnny's supposed to be watching this video, but I can see that he's surfing the web. And so then they can, you know, make that phone call to the family and have that engagement. Our teachers are emailing, they're calling on the phone. They're they're doing a tremendous job. If they're not meeting with success in reaching a student or their family, then they work with the counselors who will then reach out and try to communicate with the family, try to see what the challenges are. Our administrators, it goes up to the next level, the administrators. If they need to get involved, why are the students not engaged? So I I think that is it a problem in other districts? Yes. Is it a problem here? Yes. And is remote learning equal to in-person learning? Absolutely not. And I've said that in school committee sessions. You know, we would much rather be in person. Remote learning is second best. And so our but I think that our teachers are doing a tremendous job, and I think that they would tell you that as well.
All right, well, I really appreciate that, and I definitely would be interested in getting some some cost figures about the hotspots versus just cable, internet, or what have you. So, yeah, I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Absolutely, I wrote it down.
Any other questions from any other counselors? Counselor Gomez, and then Counselor Zaret, and then Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, Counselor.
Thank you. A quick question. It is, do you guys know if a family of multiple students have a multiple hotspot?
I don't know of any that have multiple hotspots. But I will say, this is what I will say. And I don't know if anyone in here, if anyone in this room realizes it, but we we had a new interim IT director come on board at the beginning of January. And he is really committed to customer service. And one of the things that he has really been trying to do is for families or settings, and I'll explain what I mean by that, that are still struggling after we've taken some initial steps. He will go in there into the home or into the business setting and see what else can be done. For example, we had a daycare facility in the community that had about 20 of our students doing remote learning every day. And the students were just having all kinds of struggles, even though they had a hotspot, even though they were paying a good price for a lot of bandwidth with Spectrum. So he said, well, why don't I go down to that business and look and let me see what needs to happen? And so he ended up installing a few hotspots and I think an access point in there. So that now it's running perfectly. But that's what he's starting to do. So for cases where one hotspot is not enough or they're still having struggles, those names are slowly starting to filter to me. And I mean slowly, I I had one last week. And our interim director Darren said, well, I'll go to the house and I'll bring some things and we'll see what works. But, you know, again, it's it's as we get this information, as it's being shared with us, some of it. And the one that I heard about last week was actually from one of the principals who said, no, I talked to this family. They're still struggling. This is, you know, we need to do something more. What can we do? So he's been going out into homes in between all the other things that he's trying to do. He can't obviously do that full time, but he's he is trying. And so we're trying to address challenges for families where one hotspot might not be doing enough if they have multiple children in the home.
I'm sorry, who who was next? Was it Counselor Counselor Zaret or Counselor Rothschild? I've lost track. Counselor Rothschild, you can go ahead. And then I'll get to you, Lori, I just need to get to all the counselors first. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Rothschild.
Can we skip around to different subjects on this?
As long as it's either internet or meals, yes.
Okay, well, it's not internet, but it's it's question two.
Okay.
Okay, I I just, and I noticed when I went to the school committee meeting too, that the middle school numbers for attendance are better than the other two schools. And I'm wondering what's happening differently in that school? Why is it so different than in the high school and the elementary? And is there something we can learn from what's happening in the middle school? That's a question I'll just put that on the shelf. I also echo Counselor Peak's question about providing actual Wi-Fi. I I think it's great we're providing for two families, but I'm sure it's very limited. And I just imagine there's other families that are in need. And it can't just be the families that are, you know, come forward. And I'm just going to put all my stuff together so I don't have to ask more questions. The other thing is, is I'm really pleased to hear that Darren is providing customer service and focus. But I still want to know who's setting the technology vision for the district. And we've been in a vacuum of leadership. I've said this in the school committee meeting, I'll say it here. Our former technology director was not a visionary leader for technology and education. In fact, he was a barrier to a lot of help. And he was definitely not concerned with equity. And now there's, it's great that Darren's providing customer service, but who's providing educational technology, vision, and leadership for the district? That's what I want to know.
Do you want me to do you want me to address those now? I'll start with the I'll start with the Whitebrook question, Counselor Rothschild. And I think we've had this discussion actually in our leadership team. And I think one it's one of the advantages of having a team of teachers around a student. At the elementary schools in comparison, a teacher, a child has a third grade teacher, and that's really their their teacher for the day. At the middle school, there's a group of teachers that are around a child. And I really think that the focus at the middle school, it's it's really been something that they have really strived to achieve is really make sure that they have connection with every single child. And they have they have two counselors there that I think also do a lot with the children and engage with the children. We just brought on counselors at the elementary level this year. We have one in each. Well, we have two at the elementary level. So one that is between two buildings and one at another building. And so they don't have, I don't, I don't, I think the support looks different at the elementary level. And I think at the middle school level, it's really been a strong push. Not that they haven't pushed it at the elementary level. I think they have, but I think having that team approach at the middle school level has really been beneficial. Your second question was around families and the the support for the funding their their internet access. Did I did I capture that correctly? Okay. So, you know, the challenge for us obviously is it gets a little bit financial and, you know, it's as, you know, it's a it's a it's a tough, we're we're in a tough spot. I mean, ideally, I'd like the kids to be back in school next month. Is the reality is that's probably not going to happen next month. So how far out are we going to pay for the internet access? You know, it's it's this crystal ball of the pandemic, the unknown. And it so it it does present question marks to us. The families that we did support, we we used COVID money. We used a grant that we had for COVID because obviously we didn't have a line item in the district budget for that. So we did use grant funds for that. We're still awaiting information on what this next phase of funding from the federal government will be. So, you know, that is something that is on our radar and what we will do with that. But I'm extra cautious because frankly, I know once we get students back in buildings, we're going to need so much extra support. I want to make sure that we're able to give the students those extra layers of support. So I'm trying to be very careful with the funding that we have and the funding that we hope to get. And your third question was around setting the vision for technology. I think that there's a couple of things I would say here. You know, I think right now, in the middle of the pandemic, we need to get through some of these crisis points. And I absolutely think that we should be setting a vision for the future. I think that we have a district improvement plan that's a three-year plan, and technology is woven into that. I'm happy to share that out with you. I believe it's on our district website, but I can absolutely send it to you. And we take a look at that, and that does have a focus on equity. I would also say, as far as setting a vision, we have a pre-K through eight leadership team that's focused on setting the vision for walking into the new school building in a year, a year and a half, depending on what grade level you're at. So definitely, our IT director is going to be our new interim director will be a part of that group. And I think that we've put some things in place as far as the actual building and what's inside the building that will set the vision and the tone. You know, I think that we're also, and I I kind of breezed over this at the school committee meeting. This is an opportunity for us to think about the restructuring of that department. And that's what I'm looking forward to. When our IT director left in December, we had about a week and a half to make a transition. And I didn't feel it was the appropriate time to post for an outside candidate. You know, I really just wanted to wait until things were in a better place in the world. And so I really just was looking for someone that could take on that role temporarily and keep the district moving and address the technology challenges that we had in front of us at that time. But those are some of the things that we're thinking about as we move towards getting over the next month or two and and looking into the spring and what's going to happen in that department.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Lori Garcia. Lori is on the school committee.
I'm mute. I am muted. Okay. Thank you, President Coniff. I just wanted to offer thanks for this gathering this evening to you for inviting our chair of the school committee and our superintendent, because it is so important to have this communication within our community. I would like to say I am concerned that members of the city council did not attend our our school committee meetings for the past 10 months, where we have grappled with these very concerning situations, how to educate students in the midst of a pandemic. So 10 months of having meetings, sometimes twice a week, that were open to the public. We were then told last week that two council members knocked on doors. I unfortunately am at high risk and cannot knock on doors at this point during a pandemic. But I always answer communication. I can answer communication bilingually. And I am so thankful, as I said, to our superintendent and our chair of this committee, who has come to answer so many questions that almost seem to have us at the defense. What have we tried to do? As I said, we've tried to educate our students and keep our community safe. We want to educate all. We want to educate all of all economic means, of all races, all classes. We want to know if people do not have access to internet. We want to know if people do not have food. And we will do what we can do. But we need to communicate continuously, not just at this point on the 20th of January, when we are now faced with all these questions. And at times, they almost seem like accusations. So I really want to bring this community together to move forward and try to provide the services that are so needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I I want to ask, I don't know if it's Dr. Leclerc or if we want to continue on this. I I know in one of your answers, when we talked about like, have you communicated with Charter? You know, and I I know that customer services, they're not the greatest. But I'm wondering if you are aware that that we have a contract with Charter? And so they therefore are obligated to communicate with us through their government affairs director. And he is our contact with, we have a five-year contract with them. I believe it's five years. It expires in a couple of years. But but we have a pipeline to talk to them through that contract. And so what I'm suggesting is maybe we could somehow begin those conversations. His name is John Mayer. Maybe we can begin those conversations to see if he has an ability to provide a package of internet access till June, a finite number. Can we negotiate some sort of a a package with him? Because when I when I do the math, and and let's say we're talking about high-end gaming type speed, which I have, it's $70. So you take $70 times six months or five months, and it's $350. And you multiply that by 20 or 30 families, it's still only $11,000. And so I feel like, and and I apologize if I'm sounding accusatory, but and that's entirely not what I mean. It it's born out of frustration, and I appreciate Lori's comment about we haven't attended any meetings. But, you know, with all due respect, we have a lot on our plate as well, and it is not our job to go to school committee meetings. We have multiple committee meetings we have to go to every week. And and I will say for myself, I've watched them on recording. So it's not that, you don't have to go live. There's no possibility you're going to get city counselors to go to every school committee meeting. Not going to happen, but we do watch it and we do have questions. And, you know, certainly it did get raised to the top of our plate in the last month or two. And we're starting to act on it as soon as we got it. It's not an accusation. It's it's our job to respond to the community when there is a gap. And it's all of our jobs to do that. So that was the impetus behind inviting you. I I, you know, I didn't want to invite you to the first one on the first of the new year, so I wanted to give you a little time. But I I just feel like, you know, all the money we've gotten from CARES, and I understand that I don't know how that all aligns and what it has been spent on. But that's a lot of money we've been given. And it doesn't feel like 10 or 12 or $20,000 to give kids internet access is a big number. And I and I just, I just feel like if we could create a fund, and I know this will, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that sentence that are not simple. But if we could create a fund where we could use that money to to give to families. But if we could create a fund where we could use that money to to give to families who are struggling with internet access, um, just to kind of move things along. Like, let's get that noise out of the system and then we move on to whatever the next thing is that has a lot of noise. It's not forever. Six months at $70 times, I don't know. Do you think it would be more than 30 families? I don't know. But these are the kinds of solutions I'm thinking of, and they could be completely off track. But they're they're, you know, I I will be contacting John Mayer. I I think councillor Flood and I could easily get on a phone call with him because we're both with East Hampton Media and we work closely with Charter. Um, so that maybe we'll put that on us to see if we can make some inroads there. And councillor Rothschild, if you want to participate. But I think if there's something we can do that is different or or maybe provides access that is not a hotspot, you know, I I think that's just what we have to think about. And it's not, it's not personal. It's not, it, from my perspective, it's not personal. I, you guys are all doing a phenomenal job, but we have a gap. And so let's figure out how we can fix it. And then we can move on to the next crisis that will eventually rear its ugly head.
If I could just.
Mayor has her hand up.
I understand that. Thank you. Uh, mayor, if you'd like to. Comment?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so the the contract with Charter is 10 years long, and we've just hit the fifth year. Um, I have had conversations with John Mayer, not only on the behalf of the school district, but also issues that people have had. And he's told me blank that these special deals or what Charter can do for our residents, whether it is residence school or or school district, um, ended on June 30th of 2020. As far as East Hampton Media and the relationship with John Mayer and Charter, um, I do hope that he responds. But when we were putting in the new equipment in city council that East Hampton Media so diligently researched, I was the one who had to reach out to John Mayer to get the release for that work to be done. So I hope you have more uh better luck. The other, um, what we have done at the city side, um, and I offered it to the schools, is we've gone with AT&amp;T mobile hotspots because we have an AT&amp;T uh antenna behind the safety complex. The AT&amp;T mobile hotspots, um, I've run my entire house on them, including um, uh, I don't know, my daughter's boyfriend, whatever he is, who is a day trader on Wall Street, has run his his multiple hard drive, five-screen day trading system out of my house on a mobile hotspot while watching TV and having four other computers running.
Do you know how much that is, mayor?
Yes, the um, each um, each unit is each like mobile hotspot is $49. It's $20 um, a month for each one. I've ordered 10 and that deal ended with AT&amp;T on Friday.
Okay, so at $70, okay, so I I hear you. Many hands. Um, Dr. Leclerc?
I just wanted to to say that we do have several hotspots that we ordered through some of the COVID money. Um, we ran out of, we used up all the first batch that we ordered, so we did order more. And we have them ready for any families that ask for them. So I just, I just want to relay the point that, you know, while we're always open to troubleshooting, you know, if people contact us, whether it's the IT department, whether it's their teacher or the building principal, and they express that they're having challenges with connectivity, we work on that with them. So, you know, I I want to make sure that people that are listening know that we're addressing challenges that come up. And, you know, obviously we can't fix it if we don't know about it. But I really don't think that our gaps are as wide and vast as, but but I could be wrong. So I, you know, I need to hear about it. But what I, but I want to relay is that, you know, if we hear that there's a problem, we're doing what we can to address it.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, councillor Rothschild and then councillor Kuzinski.
Okay, this um, I just wanted to say in terms of internet access, and we're talking about as soon as we go back to school, this isn't going to be an issue. And the fact is, it is. Online learning is here to stay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so it's not just on the schools. It's it's on us as a whole society, infrastructure. I mean, we need to have, and I know Tom and the telecommunications committee has been working on this to get affordable broadband in East Hampton. But I mean, I think it's something we need to grapple with as a community, both smaller and larger, that kids are going to need assistance with internet access when they're back in the buildings. This is a clear equity issue. It's access to information, participation in society. You need to have internet. I mean, that's all there is to it. So.
Okay. Any other questions from any other councillors? Um, uh, councillor Kuzinski, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to thank everyone for gathering and being willing to come here with an open heart and to talk about subjects that are of deep concern to all of us. I'd like to say that I think corporate America has a responsibility to help out in these situations. It seems to me that those who are making money during this time of COVID-19, and there are many who are making money hand over fist with their businesses, can and should be approached by a coordinated effort to assist people in this community who need the help. I think that uh I I know every time anyone calls our household, uh, they get an immediate answer and a response. So please, I would ask Dr. Leclerc again to help out with telling us how best to get technology and connectivity issues resolved. Is it, is it calling you? Is it calling the principal? Uh, is it calling Dale? Is it calling directly to the IT department? How can we help with that aspect and at least begin to identify if there are more problems than we're currently made aware of? Because we want to solve them. So I'd ask this question, and I do have another another question after I have that answer, please.
So the answer, I'm I'm glad you asked asked this question. Really, the best place to start is with your child's teacher. They have had training in some of the basics. They're the ones that are going to say, are all your tabs closed? They're they're going to be the ones that are going to ask the simple questions. And then from there, if if it's a problem within the family as far as we can't pay the Wi-Fi, we're struggling, we need um, we need another hotspot, they can absolutely, the next step should be the principal. And the principal will take all that information, will work on solving the problem and will call them back and let them know. Beyond that, on our website, we have a tech support ticket system that anyone can use. Our teachers, our students, anyone can just click on it and fill in the information. And then that gets in the system and that's how our tech department um structures their day, what the tech tickets are for the day and the order of urgency, that's how they get addressed. So those are the three ways, but I would start with the classroom teacher first if it's a low-level problem. I mean, of course, you know, I'm in the office every day. People are in, people are around every day. You know, I was sitting at my desk the other day and a parent called and said, my student can't log in. Okay, let me walk over to the IT department and get it solved for you right now. So we took care of it, you know, because we're there. So I mean, we'll address whatever we have to address.
Okay.
And uh councillor. Imagine, I I would imagine that much of this go will 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 go away. The need for just the stress that everyone is going through, whether they be students or teachers or parents, when we are able to tackle COVID-19 uh, and get back hopefully sooner than later to a a more normal society. I would implore everyone to heed the caution to observe the mask wearing, to observe all protocols. If we could just get together for 60 days and not interact in ways that are dangerous to spread this COVID, we would not be dealing with much of these issues. Because frankly, I believe we're going to need more money for our schools. And I'm wondering what's going to be coming down the pipeline with your budget and the needs that you foresee uh, as much as you can predict the future. And I certainly hope there aren't any in any detractions from your budget at this time, any deductions.
Okay, I, you know, I think um, I know that there's probably other questions that are going on. Shannon, did I see your name go, or your handle up? Do you want to say, I, because I want to wrap this up and and move on, so you can have the last word if you'd like.
Oh, lots of.
Well, no, actually, let's be honest.
I'll give the last word to Shannon. No, um, so I heard um, somebody mention postcards. Um, I know that a lot of the communication that's been going out is via email or over um, social media. For people who don't have good internet, they're not getting this information. Um, so can we talk about the postcards and who would draft that and get it out and let's make this happen?
Yeah, I I I think it's it's probably a bigger question. I think it's a, I think it's something that I I say bigger question only because the mayor is going to have to pay for it or Dr. Leclerc will have to pay for it. But I'm all for that. I think I think a mass mailing with information in multiple languages on that postcard would be a good place to start to close some gaps that clearly, clearly exist with people not being able to call. To your point, Shannon, if they don't have good internet, they're not going to get emails. They're not going to get notifications. They may not, their phone may not even work. Um, so.
They may not have a phone.
They may not have a phone. So I I think we need to think a little bit outside the box in terms of notification. I do like that idea. And um, I I think it's something that we need to have a conversation with, maybe offline with Dr. Leclerc and the mayor to find out how we do this. I mean, we all get these mailings for other, you know, less critical things that we all get in our mailbox. And I think this might be a time when we can, we can use that function differently. So um, yeah, I, you know, I think we need to talk about that. I'll talk about it with some of my colleagues on the council and see if it's something we want to pursue.
So you mean I can harass them?
Funding. Say that again, I'm sorry, what?
You mean I can harass everybody?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Really no different than what you do now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Um, so I I really appreciate Dr. Leclerc and Cynthia and all of the school committee and um, Ken for showing up tonight. I know this is really no fun for anyone, but it it's important. And I think we have to use whatever tools we have. And one of the tools we have is to invite department heads to city council to talk about things like this. And and I appreciate that that you uh, you and your um, city, school committee also showed up. I sense that this may not be the last time we do this. So um, I think we're going to kind of look at all of the conversation we've had tonight and come up with different action plans and and come back to you and say, what do you think about this? I also will ask the community members that are here to please let us know. You've been out there, you have done the the outreach to a lot of these folks. You know, let us know what ideas might work from a communication perspective. Um, and we'll work on, you know, some of the the things that government takes a long time to do, which is figure out if we can get some funding and figure out if there's a way to to bridge some of these gaps. But, you know, uh, I think conversation, as someone mentioned earlier, is is very good. And I think we need to do more of that. So I appreciate that you're all here. Certainly, we didn't solve anything, but I think we came to a better understanding of what's going on. I do want to say that I think the meal thing can probably go forward very quickly. And I'd like to see that happen. Um, but, you know, we'll see where that goes. I I I want to talk to some folks as well. Cynthia, yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to throw one more piece of information that you may not have gotten from school committee meetings because not all of you have been able to watch them. There is an issue with food. There is an issue with um, getting kids to have the internet, making sure everybody has access to a laptop. But just so you know, part of, one of your questions was about attendance. And um, one of the biggest problems that teachers in all districts and all school committees, all superintendents and administrators are grappling with is there is an increasing toll that is being taken on our kids emotionally and mentally as we um, go through this pandemic. Hybrid learning is very difficult for some students and remote is easier for some. Remote learning is extremely hard for others. It's devastating for them, but it's it's comfortable for other people. And so one of the things I want you to know that our schools, uh, our school district is working very hard to do is to track the emotional and the mental health of our students. So when we have students who aren't attending school, teachers, and I talk to Allison about this all the time. I'll call her up and say, okay, are the teachers calling? Are the principals calling? Are the councillors calling? I want you to know, there's a lot of outreach. I myself, in my district, I spend hours and hours every day after school ends reaching out to my students, my families to help them to stay okay and to stay positive. So I just want to let you know that that's another piece that is going to be a major part. When we come out of this pandemic, we are going to have to do a major um, fix for our kids mentally and emotionally. One, just to get them back to feeling okay, leaving their houses and coming out to learn again. So um, you know, I appreciate the time to talk to the public about all the issues that we're um, working on. But it is a much, i- i- it is so multifaceted that um, you know, school districts are spending hours trying to reach out to every problem and to every student and to every family. I mean, the parents alone who have to help their children through remote are suffering. And they need, they need support. So that's all I wanted to let you know. We're really working on that. And the best thing we can do is have you call us, talk to us, write to us, um, and reach out. I would love to collaborate and and, you know, fix these problems. We're going to have a major one with mental health, and I am concerned about that.
Yeah, no, I I concur. That is a problem. Again, thank you to all of the school committee and to Dr. Leclerc and and your your team and your staff. Uh, you know, this is, this is hard stuff and I appreciate that you're willing to to talk to us and and work through the the hard conversations. But um, we appreciate you. So let's keep talking and um, we'll come up with some solutions. So thank you. I'm now going to ask um, city councillors, I would like to take a five-minute recess. We will be back at 9:15 or 9:14. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your attendance. So we're going to take a short recess right now. So we're going to take a short recess right now. We'll resume in about two minutes.
Okay.
Mayor still here? Mayor, just FYI, we'll, we'll segue right into your, your item when we reconvene.
I don't think she's at her computer right now.
Yeah, that's fine. Just waiting for Counsel Peake and Counsel Kuzinski. Mayor, are you online currently? Within the sound of my voice?
I am.
Okay. You may not have heard that when we, we come back into session, we'll start with your item on the nuclear thing. Okay.
Yes, and I have an additional item.
Was that cleared with the city council president?
Yeah.
No, kidding, I'm kidding. It's your, it's your agenda topic. You can do whatever you want. As soon as JP Counsel Kuzinski comes back.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well. Come on over there.
You did say 9:15, so maybe give them, oh, it's 9:15.
There we go, boy, right up to the time limit. Counsel Kuzinski, you're on mute, we can't hear you anyway. Okay.
You did say 9:15.
14:15. Okay, so city council is now back in session, continuing on with our agenda. The, the item we have now is mayor communications. And I know Mayor LaChapelle, you had an executive order you wanted to talk about. And then you had another item you also wanted to talk about. So I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The document that is in your packet tonight is one of, is actually the first executive policy order of my administration. I will just give a quick preface to this. Actually, I, it's in the, in the order. I'll go ahead and I'd like to thank the perseverance and resilience of a nuclear weapon-free East Hampton for working and being patient with me on, on making this executive policy order. It wouldn't have happened without them. That's saying, "Executive policy order supporting the mitigation and abolish, abolition of nuclear weapons." Whereas, "The City of East Hampton joined the Mayors for Peace Initiative originating from the mayor of Hiroshima seeking a ban on the use of nuclear weapons." And whereas, "Of December 1st, 2020, 7,974 cities in 165 countries and regions have joined the Mayors for Peace in calling for the elimination of nuclear weapons." Whereas, "On January 22nd, 2021, the Treaty of the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons will enter into force as international law three months after the 50th ratification of the treaty." And whereas, "On September 18th, 2019, the city council, the East Hampton City Council passed a resolution urging the United States to support the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons." And whereas, "The mayor of East Hampton is compelled to stand with the mayor of Hiroshima in issuing such executive order to demonstrate local sentiment that the horror of nuclear weapons is not seen again by any city." Now therefore, "It is and shall be the City of East Hampton's continuing policy to reduce and eventually eliminate any and all ties to the nuclear weapon industry." "It is and shall be the continuing policy of the City of East Hampton that, to the extent practical, practicable and permitted by law, the city shall not contract with companies that are directly involved with the manufacture or maintenance of nuclear weapons." "It is and shall be the continuing policy of the City of East Hampton to the extent practicable and permitted by law. The city shall work to eliminate and avoid any investments in companies involved in the manufacture or maintenance of nuclear weapons." Signed, Mayor Nicola Chappelle, City of East Hampton, Massachusetts, as presented to the city council on January 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. This is very important and I really appreciate you putting that into kind of codification so that it, we don't have to do a resolution every year. Thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you. The second item I'd like to bring forward is, is around honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I will send this to city council and school committee and we'll post on the, on the website. So dated January 18th, 2021, to city council from Mayor Nicola Chappelle, honoring Dr. Martin Luther King. "Observed each year on the third Monday in January as a day on, not a day off. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service to encourage all Americans to volunteer to improve their communities. East Hampton residents participated in a wide range of community service events even in the face of COVID-19. Today, I recognize a treasure resource that solves, serves our city with meager funding and boundless enthusiasm, the Emily Williston Memorial Library. I am grateful for the work of Director Nora Blake and her team composed of Joshua Bean, Myra Cranshaw, Kelly Crisp, Emmett Flame, Angela King, Stephanie Levine, Maura McAndrew, Jonathan Schmidt, Patty Shaw, Greg Tessier, and Dave Wallace. The, the library's board of incorporators, the library board of incorporators tenacity demonstrates the value the library brings to East Hampton. And I now thank each corporator. Elizabeth Applequist, Jenna Barron, Jessica Berger, Susan Boss Brown, Gail Cannon, Sean Casey, Laurel Gardner, Seth Hardwood, Aunt Audrey Heinovin, David Ingram, Lori Ingram, Rachel Jennings, Caitlin Kelly, Joan Kurtz, Linda LaBord, Robert O'Connell, Joanne O'Leary, Lois Parent, Judy Poole, Christian Reader, Daniel Ritchie, Kate Rollin, Sue Walts, Paul Wheeler, Samuel Williston, and Marjorie Zieg. Given the clear connection between the community and, between the library and community health, I will be submitting a $10,000 supplemental appropriation from the Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund for the January 3rd, 2021 city council meeting. Support for the above appropriation from this fund includes a Center for Disease Control peer-reviewed articles, Public Libraries Partner for Health and Beyond Books, Public Libraries as Partners for Population Health. Thank you."
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor. And I just, one correction, I think you, you said January 3rd, but you meant February 3rd city council meeting. So anyone listening.
Yes, I did.
So, thank you for that. Look forward to, to having a discussion on that topic. Anything further, Mayor? Does anyone have any questions of the mayor? Seeing none? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've come to that point in the meeting that I know we all love. The committee reports. Counsel Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. Our next meeting will be January 27th, that's a week from today, at 5:00 PM. We will be dealing with the one item, the licensing board request, as well as the new business. I'd like to enter the new business to the committee right now. There are three items. One of them is the council budget, which was drafted by the city clerk, as well as two supplemental appropriations. I'll make a first reading. A supplemental appropriation is requested for $34,676 to be transferred from free cash to be transferred to FY21 32B Health Insurance Holiday Account, $34,676 for the following purpose, to provide funds for one-week insurance deduction holiday in fiscal year 2021 per union agreement. The next supplemental appropriation I'll make as a first reading is, the amount requested is $50,000 to be requested, to be transferred from the Cannabis Impact Fee Stabilization Account, $50,000 to be transferred to the Clerk Records Management Phase 2 FY21 Account of $50,000 for the following purpose, to begin Phase 2 of the City Records Management Project. This portion of the project would involve records work at 50 Payson Avenue and the Old Town Hall. The funding would, would hire an archives record company to re-box index and review records for microfilming and destruction based on a city's record survey completed in November of 2020. It would also include the purchase of shelving and boxes and the development of records database. I move that these two appropriations, along with the city budget, be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Taken.
Motion second to move the supplemental appropriations, as well as the FY22 city council budget, to the Finance Committee. Any further conversation? Barbara. Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarrett.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
I further move, Madam President, that the $50,000 appropriation request and the $34,676 appropriation request be set for public hearing on February 3rd.
Taken.
Motion second to set public hearing for the two supplemental appropriations, February 3rd. Any further conversation? Barbara. Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski. Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zarrett.
He's nodding.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Madam President, that concludes finance.
Thank you, Counsel Rist. Public safety, I presume Counsel Gomez, no meeting.
No report this time.
Okay. Appointments, Counsel Ross Trump.
Hello. Um, yes, we had five appointments, I believe, yeah, reappointments. We had Chris Korzak and Paul St Pierre, Ted Polakowski and Austin Sanders. I spoke to, I communicated with all of them except for Austin. Ted Polakowski, he was fun to talk to. He's on the Veterans Council. He's been on it for more than a couple decades, I think. They haven't met since COVID-19. And so I was just wondering if anybody wanted to reach out to that group and if they needed any assistance with Zoom or if they don't have reasons to meet. I mean, most of their business is around events, but I know they do maintain the monuments or place flags. So they haven't met in over a year, so, or in a year at least. So I don't know who would do that, but Barb, did you want to say something?
I, I want to say that they, they generally only meet a couple times a year anyway. Usually like around Memorial Day and Veterans Day, but they don't really meet very often.
Okay.
The mayor has her hand up.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would echo what the city clerk said. And also our vets agent, Jade Le, our veterans agent, Mike Slater, is also, I, I can have him reach out and just double check that they don't need, you know, any assistance or accessing the Zoom, but they meet very infrequently.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a very nice conversation. That's why I enjoy the conversations, I get to meet people in the community and learn about the different committee work. So anyway, I move to confirm the reappointment of Austin Sanders to the Board of Public Works, Chris Korczik to the EDIC, Paul St Pierre Jr. to the EDIC, Paul St Pierre Jr. to the Parks and Rec Commission, and Ted Polakowski to the Veterans Council Committee, all with a term ending December 31st, 2023.
Taken.
Motion second for the five appointment, reappointments. Any further conversation? Barbara? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what, Lindsay?
I didn't mention, it was a three to nothing, three to zero. We all were, we all were in favor of these in our committee.
Barbara. JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zarrett.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We just began the discussion of our agenda item about the appointment process. And we'll be continuing it. So if there's people in the community that are interested in the appointment process and want to learn more about it or lend themselves to the conversation, that we're going to be continuing that conversation. New business, I move to move the following three mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Austin Sanders to the Planning Board with a term ending 12/31/2022. Catherine Harrison to the Affordable and Fair Housing Committee with a term ending 12/31/2021. And Jackie Brusso Pereira to the Board of Register, Board of Register Voters with a term ending 12/31/2023.
Motion second for moving three mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Any discussion, Barbara? Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zarrett.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. In terms of our upcoming meetings, my two colleagues and I are all available next Wednesday. Okay. In terms of our upcoming meetings, my two colleagues and I are all available next Wednesday and Thursday at 6:00. So I want to have one of those dates for the Ad Hoc Assessor Selection Committee. So I might want to check in with Dan and Gwen and see which of those two dates they're available. And then we'd have our appointment. Dan, you're probably unavailable on Thursday.
Well, Counsel Peak is going to announce a rules meeting on that date, so. And I already have a Finance meeting on Wednesday, so we may have to talk.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, since, since that isn't where, I'll just set the Appointments Committee meeting for Wednesday at 6:00. Is that, is that a Zoom tweak? Is there a Zoom conflict?
What's next Wednesday?
We have Finance that night.
Yeah, we have Finance at 5:00, and yeah. I can't guarantee that we'll have availability on the City Council account, but we can look at another account if we need to. Does it have to be Wednesday?
Wednesday or Thursday, that's when the three of us are available.
Why don't you guys meet on Thursday?
Okay, Thursday at 6:00.
And, and then we'll figure out what to do about the Ad Hoc Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, and that concludes.
Okay. And you said 6:00 or 5:00? 6:00 o'clock?
6:00.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Ordnance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. The ordinance committee met last Thursday, the 14th. We had the pleasure of having Sergeant Ross join us to discuss our engine brake proposal. And so I'd like to just give a little bit of history on this, because it's been in our committee for quite some time. And kind of the reason why it sat with us. So this was originally brought to us by some concerned citizens. I think Counselor Kuzinski was involved in this as well around, you know, trucks speeding, using something known as a jack brake, and, you know, creating a lot of noise. A lot of surrounding communities have ordinances around engine brakes, the use of engine brakes. But as we dug into this issue further, what we found was, we found that trucks actually have jack brakes as a safety precaution. And so using these brakes are a way for the trucks to slow down when they're carrying really heavy loads. And after talking to Sergeant Ross, what we realized was that the issue was not necessarily with the use of these particular brakes, but potentially altered exhausts that have been, you know, customized, that are against the law anyway. And that the enforcement of an engine brake ordinance would be very difficult, if not impossible. And really, the surrounding towns aren't enforcing it. They just have signs when you go into the community. It's not something that's actively enforced, because it's very hard to enforce. And so, you know, we wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence, and we, you know, identified different areas in town that we thought would benefit from potentially this. But as it came to the end of our investigation, we found that it would probably make sense to not pass an ordinance that can't be enforced, number one. And number two, you know, looking at using our existing enforcement to kind of mitigate what the real problem is, which is speeding and the use of kind of altered exhausts that create a lot of noise as well. And so, you know, what we have decided to do is we've decided to release this from our agenda without prejudice. And before I make that motion, I would, you know, give the other members of my committee an opportunity to chime in in case I missed something. Counselor Peak, looks like.
Yeah, I just, I think that the point that was made by a couple people who weighed in over the time was that these, I think, I believe that it's Jake brakes, the engine brakes that they use. In a modern truck with a proper muffler system, they won't be making the sort of noise that some people are seeing as sort of onerous. And where that is happening, it could be older trucks, but it's often trucks that are intentionally modified to be loud for one reason or another. And so my real concern was with banning something that, when properly used with a, you know, a modern truck, is a safety feature, because some people are being irresponsible and modifying their trucks to be obnoxious. So that was generally my concern, was the idea that we could be sort of punishing somebody for driving safely. And so, yeah, that was just sort of my part of this.
Thank you. And I'd be happy to entertain any other questions before I make a motion.
Counselor Kuzinski.
I appreciate your summarization. I think you characterized my understanding of the meetings very clearly, both Counselor Derby and Counselor Peak. Counselor Zarren and I had introduced this idea at the behest of folks on busy streets in our community. And we want to be sure that their peace is not disturbed by folks doing onerous behavior in our community. We were kind of pretty much convinced that Sergeant Ross very clearly knew his work. He was on a larger committee in the region dealing with trucks, and he is the truck enforcement officer. So I think he reassured many of the folks. And I just want to be clear that we would be taking this off without prejudice, so that should we find that there isn't proper enforcement, or if there are complaints, that we stay on top of it as much as possible during the times of COVID, of course. But it is, it is a factor in the community, so we'll be watching carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. I think that's exactly right, in that at our meeting, you know, we did talk to Sergeant Ross about enforcement, and he has been actively enforcing out in his pickup, you know, pulling trucks over and doing compliance. And he even mentioned about potentially asking Chief Alberdi to give him a little bit of flexibility in his schedule, so he could be out at a broader range of time to be able to do this type of enforcement. And I think that, you know, if nothing else came from this, that this is, that's a really positive thing that we have a dedicated officer who's an expert on, you know, truck safety and compliance, who is really engaged and out there, you know, trying to make sure that people are following the rules. So, you know, I think this process did come to some fruition. While it's not creating an ordinance, it did have some positive impact, I would say. And if nobody has anything else, I would definitely, in the form of a motion, move to remove the engine brake ordinance from the ordinance agenda without prejudice. And this was voted 3-0, by the way.
Okay.
Who did the second on that?
JP. I did the second, if there are no other discussion on the matter.
Well, thanks. You took it right out, you took the words right out of my mouth. Any further discussion?
Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zarrett.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we do have a meeting next Tuesday, which is the 26th at 6:00 PM. And this is an important meeting, as we will be discussing the changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we're hoping to have some guests at that meeting, so if anybody's interested in that, that is the time to come, next Tuesday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM. So that's, I think that's important. I believe that at the last meeting, I sent the solar to the Planning Board and back to us, so we're just waiting on the joint public hearing that's going to happen with that. And we have the other item on our agenda, the cannabis time. We have a public hearing at our next meeting. And we did, last meeting, we got a new agenda item on cannabis as well that we will be discussing. And thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Property, Counsel Zarren.
Thank you, President Coniff. So we just had our public hearing for the poll locations, so that is off our agenda now. We met, I think it was last Thursday, the 14th, we met with Planner Bag and Janet Tetra to discuss the housing production plan, and the committee voted 3-0 to recommend that the council approve the housing production plan. I believe we will be setting a joint public hearing with the Planning Board on the, is that the second week, the second meeting in?
That was my understanding, February 17th.
February 17th, and I'll present a report as well on our meeting. There were a few questions about the plan, mostly vis a vis how to make it actionable on the city council level, so I'll be, I'll be reporting out on that then. So I guess.
Want to have a public hearing tonight?
Yes. So in the, in the, in the form of a motion, I would like to set a joint public hearing with the Planning Board and the full city council for February, was that, 17th?
17th, yeah.
That was a motion.
Taken.
Motion second to set a public hearing for the housing production plan on February 17th. Any further conversation? Barbara.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zarrett.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have an item of new business. This is another petition from Eversource to install a jointly-owned pole between two existing poles on Main Street, northeast really of South Street. They have requested again that we co-schedule the property meeting with the city council meeting. I don't think I'll be able to accommodate that, but my, my view is that we were able to deliberate this in committee and await input to our questions at the public hearing. And unless anyone objects, my thought would be that the property could meet. If Eversource can make that meeting, which would not be on the same day as the public hearing, they can be available at the public hearing to answer any questions. I don't, so I guess that would be my first statement, unless someone has a broad objection to that.
Counsel Rist.
My only question, Owen, is we've had some issues with the geometry of that particular intersection. And I'd like to know where the heck they're putting this new pole, and whether or not it'll interfere with observation. So I think you should definitely have a property committee meeting that has them at it to answer those questions. Although I'm willing to ask the same questions the night of the council meeting, but if there's a, if there's some problem with it, I won't vote in favor of it. I'm very concerned about that intersection, as you know. So I think we should talk about it at committee level and get them there with a map. Where is it going? Okay? This is my opinion.
There is a map.
There is a map.
Okay, that means I didn't look at my package very closely. I apologize.
But, I mean, to your point, I'll make every effort. I mean, I'll say a couple things. One is, it's very difficult, for a variety of reasons, to accommodate having a thorough, robust property meeting before city council on Wednesday, and having enough time without running into those constraints. So I will do everything I can to coordinate with the Eversource rep to discuss that. There is a map available for the plan. It's certainly something we could talk about more. And then if there are questions, we could certainly address them at the, at the public hearing. My, I'd like to set that public hearing for the 17th, so that gives us ample time to hopefully maybe coordinate the availability of the Eversource rep for two, two separate meetings. So that's in the form of a motion. I'd like to set that public hearing for February 17th.
Have you moved it to the committee yet?
I have not.
Let's do that, and then let's.
Thank you. I will, thank you. I'll remove that motion and make a motion to move this agenda item for the location of a jointly-owned pole along Main Street, approximately 183 feet northeast really with the intersection with South Street, to the property committee.
Second. Motion second to move a poll request to the property committee. Barbara.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zarrett.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Motion passes. Counsel Zarren, now you, now we can.
Now, in the form of a motion, I'd like to set the public hearing for that item for February 17th, 2021.
Second.
Motion second to set a public hearing for the poll request for February 17th at 6:15. Barbara. JP, I'm sorry, hang on, Barb. Yes, JP.
I just wanted to say clearly that since Counsel Rist had expressed some concern, if it turns out that we can't, the questions aren't able to be attended, the meeting isn't able to be attended by the representative, then I would be fully prepared to delay the public hearing. So just to put that on record.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing about the public hearings with a poll location is I do have to send out postcards to all the abutters. So once it's set, it goes out notice to all the abutters, just so you know.
Counsel Zarren.
I mean, I feel pretty confident.
We could set it in two weeks. You know, as we get closer to the 17th, we could set it on the 3rd. Could we, Barb? Is that enough time for notice?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, you want to do that? Owen.
You mean pending, pending a property meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we can, if it turns out, we can always set the public hearing for the 17th on our next meeting on the 3rd. We don't have to.
That's fine. I happen, yeah, I think that makes sense. I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Withdraw the second.
Okay. Thank you. I think, yeah, it's probably, I didn't realize there were those requirements, Barbara, that makes sense.
Yeah, the utility company prepares the postcards. I just mailed them.
Okay.
So then my goal, I will try to get a property meeting then. Well, by, by next meeting, I'll at least know if we can have the rep present at both the property meeting and, and our city council meeting for a public hearing. So I'll get on that tomorrow.
Okay.
And thus concludes.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Zarren. Rules and Government Relations, Counsel Peak.
I saw that Counsel Rist had his hand up.
I just wanted to formally apologize to the council and to Counsel Zarren. I don't always look at everything in my packet. I just saw the map. I'm no longer concerned. My apologies to everyone. It was just a button that was pushed for me, and I ought to do my homework.
Fine. No worries. Counsel Peak.
Okay. So we have not met since the last meeting. We're going to be meeting next Thursday. That would be the 28th at 5:00 PM. And I see that we have one new item of business to discuss, which is a conflict of interest sign-off request. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to move that to Rules and Government Relations.
Motion second to move disclosure, conflict of interest disclosure to the Rules and Government Relations Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Owen Zarrett.
Yes, sorry, switching screens.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Daleum Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. And just one little bit of update. I did speak to the mayor about two of the items that we spoke about at our last meeting, those being the emails for committee chairs and the anti-bias training. And the sense I got from speaking to the mayor is that on both of those items, there was some things in the works on the executive side that might clarify some stuff, particularly with the emails and.
uh, particularly with the, um, uh, the, uh, emails and, and transitions and, uh, in the IT department. Uh, so I'm going to, we, we have right now deadlines for both of those that are in, uh, April. So I'm going to sort of work on chipping away at the rest of these items and come back to those, uh, in a bit because the, the sense we got at our last meeting was that, um, on both of those items, we just wanted to have a little bit of a dialogue, uh, with the mayor, maybe some department heads. So, um, those I'm going to put aside, and I'm going to, uh, try to get to a few more of these items, uh, in the meantime. Uh, and, uh, that concludes.
Thank you, Counsel Peak. Um, we have ad hoc committees. Anything, Counsel Peak, regarding rank choice voting?
Only that we're meeting, uh, this week, uh, and, or tomorrow, actually, yes. Um, but, uh, I would also say that when it comes to these ad hoc committees, we can't talk about it now, but probably going forward, it's occurring to me that the ordinance review should probably be on this agenda.
Good point.
So just a thought. Uh, but, but yeah, nothing else to report from rank choice voting.
Okay. Thank you. Senior tax work off, lots of stuff going on there. Counsel Kuzinski, do you want to bring everybody up to speed with what we're doing tomorrow and?
Well, what we're doing tomorrow is very interesting. Yes. Thank you, uh, Counsel Coniff. Uh, we have, uh, we're rounding the, uh, the turn into the home stretch and have a report to make tomorrow that will be, uh, discussed, um, summarizing what has been done to date and kind of outlining, uh, some, some suggestions, uh, for the community. And we hope to have, uh, the mayor with us at that time. So 6:00 on Thursday.
Okay. We would, uh, we will, and I don't think, we're not gonna, we, we don't have to do a public hearing, but, or maybe we do, I don't know. But at some point, when we review this with the council, will we set it as a public hearing so that the public can weigh in on it as we present it to the council, um, so that we can allow a dialogue? Or will we be presenting it just from our committee to city council? Just for clarification?
I was anticipating that we would present to the city council directly and that, uh, if there were further questions at that time, we could reserve the right to hold a public hearing.
That's fair.
Open to any other, uh, thoughts about it. I don't think it requires a public.
It doesn't, no. Uh, Counsel Rist, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted to clarify, 6:00 Thursday tomorrow, not next week?
6:00 tomorrow, we have a meeting.
Just, just thinking about conflict.
We'll be presenting to the mayor, uh, our findings, and then we'll be presenting to city council. And just to clarify, well, I, we can't talk about, okay. Um, anything further? I think that was it, right? Counsel Kuzinski?
And this concludes, Madam President.
Okay. We have done old business. We have done new business. I believe that we have completed our agenda. Anyone? Okay. Then I will take a motion to adjourn. Somebody did. Counsel Zarin, and Pat, you don't get to do anything. Thank you, Pat. Who, who is seconding the motion to adjourn?
I will.
Counsel Peak, okay. All those in favor?
I know.
Barbara? I've lost control. You're on mute, Barb.
Peg Coniff?
Yes, please.
Daleum Derby?
Yes, please.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Rothschild?
See.
Owen Zaret?
You, I mean I.
Thank you, everyone. This was another marathon, but thanks for hanging in there.
Good night.
See you later, guys. Bye.
Good night.